Town meeting to order, please. Did you want to swear people in first?
Call the meeting to order first.
I did. Yeah, all right. Would you please join me in a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Amy has to swear people in.
And I would just ask all the town meeting members, sorry, I sat down already, all of you to rise again. In going back through my list, I realize a good number of you never come in after being reelected to get sworn in. So we're going to swear everybody in again, okay? So raise your right hand. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as a town meeting member according to the bylaws of the town and the laws of the Commonwealth. Congratulations.
You know, I asked nicely once. I'm not going to ask so nicely. If you wish your vote to be counted, town meeting members are required to sit by our bylaw in the center section, so I know who is a town meeting member and who isn't. So please, if you want me to count your vote, please move into the center section. Makes it easier for all of us all around. Thank you. Excuse me. Please move into the center section. That has been a requirement of town meeting for decades. Yes, it has been enforced. We allowed people to expand during COVID. That's not the issue anymore. So please move into the center section. I haven't seen anybody bite or get into a fight because they were there.
You can sit in the back.
Yeah. All right. Okay, let's get the show on the road. We've got the pledge out of the way. We have some housekeeping to take care of. So the moderator would entertain a motion that would allow two members to attend virtually per the ADA to name Bruce Maury as deputy moderator should he be needed, that we adjourn until Wednesday, May 15th at 2024 at 7 o'clock if our business has not been completed, and that we are allowed to vote by raising our hands instead of standing. All those in favor?
Stand up.
Thank you. All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Since we have some new folks here, let's take a minute on protocol. When we get to time for discussions, raise your hand and wait to be recognized. You can't speak until I've recognized you to speak. That's just the rule of the place. When you are recognized, stand, wait for the microphone to show up. Hold on a second because it always takes the microphone a second to catch up to you. Name and precinct, and then go about your comments or your questions. Committees and boards speak through the chair, and that is who I will recognize unless someone else has been indicated as an alternate speaker. And when you're speaking, consider, think about chewing on the microphone, so that, don't hold it down here. Please, hold the microphone up so we can hear you when you speak. And I think that's it. Any questions on anything? Okay. In that case, we'll move on to Article One. Reports of committees and departments. We have one to start with. Ms. Tantakalas is going to speak, our development director. Now, I got the name right, but I probably didn't get the title right, so.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, well pronounced. My name is Melissa Tantakalas, and I work as the Economic Development Director for the town of Burlington. So I am just going to put up my presentation. So I opened it. Okay, great. So thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, town meeting members. This is an update on the Mall Road Mixed Use Zoning Initiative. And some context for our new town meeting members. Congratulations and welcome. It's exciting that you're here. So a little background, as many of you already know, 65% of our money, the money that comes into town to fund town operations, staff services, comes from our commercial properties. And this image here to the right, you can see that. And this has really been good for us. As our town clerk, Amy Warfield, has described it to me, we as a community have really benefited from the land use choices and the land use decisions that were made 60, 70 years ago when we leveraged these highway construction projects and strategically allowed for commercial and retail in this corridor. So today, that has generated over 60% every year of funds that, you know, reduces our burden on our single home taxpayer dollar bill that kind of goes into the town every year. So with that, the impetus for the rezoning initiative and a lot of the land use initiatives that you'll be hearing in this May town meeting and in September is rooted in the idea to preserve that commercial property tax and really maintain financial stability. And the impetus for this has not even been, you know, over the last couple of years, but rooted well back when we started the master plan. So a lot of land use recommendations, open space recommendations are in our plan that you will be able to see. And then just here, a couple of other reasons why this is important and why we're moving forward is obviously the preservation of these values. And I think it's also a really great opportunity for us to, as we develop our own zoning for Burlington and revision it, we can build in some better sustainable development practices, and all that leads to economic vitality and growth. This image is just to remind us that if you take a look in that document, the master plan document out of the planning office, you will see land use recommendations coming in about how to really plan ahead for our future. So in September, this will look a little bit more familiar to you. What we will be presenting is a new zoning district, and it's a mixed use district that really explores this commercial corridor that has 8 million square feet of office, has no residential. And what we want to do is allow for more development within there so that it enhances the existing commercial. And we can, in the future conversations and any questions or comments, please come to me. I'm, you know, interested in talking to all of you about this. But this is aspirationally where we want to go and really incorporate more open space and pedestrian connectivity. These white squares, again, are surface parking lots and potential areas for what they call infill development. Not necessarily redevelopment of existing, although that's possible, really building into what we already have. And why this is important is we have a lot of development pressures, as you know, part of why we have high costs of housing and so forth. But we are strategically located. We are very lucky to have the geographic desirability that Burlington has. So if we have the right zoning in place to guide development over time, this, again, is a 20 to 30-year process at best. We will see and guide development incrementally over time as it comes in, as there's new demand. And what we can do is kind of control and build in a network so that the pedestrian open space means a priority for this area. So this is at existing conditions, and the zoning that's before you will help build in over time something that has more open space. But yet to get there, we'll have more density and higher, you know, kind of higher levels of residential, it will have residential, but it'll have a higher level of stories, like gosh, four to five stories on average in this area. So, and that's kind of what we're looking at today. And they're really focusing on how it can be pedestrian oriented. With that, the next couple of steps to stay tuned for, in the back, the document is online today. So if you take this flyer, which is in the back of your handouts, and scan it with your phone, you could start reading the new zoning today. So it's online, so I encourage you to read the draft as it stands today. If you sign into your Google account, if you have one of those, you can add comments. So we can start that conversation. And I want to commend our Land Use Committee's Planning Board, Bill Gaffney, our Land Use Committee, Dave Waddillo, and then also ZBRC, Sherry, for really helping to start this conversation early. And that we are planning to kind of reunite and have those meetings. So for September, as many of you know, you'll have to have it ready by the end of June. So it takes some work, but I know everyone is up to the challenge. And if you have any questions, please feel free to email or reach out to my office. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Melissa. That, well, actually, yes. Another report under Article One, our financial review. Mr. Sagarino and Mr. Denizio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. About to present our annual budget review to town meeting. This graphic here, what it does is represents the budget process from start to finish. So we started this process back in November, December by developing budget guidelines for everybody to follow so that we would have a balanced budget by the time we got here today. As we move through the process, the departments prepare their budgets. Ways and Means subcommittees review them. They ultimately go to a Ways and Means full review. I should have apologized for the mask. I'm just getting over COVID, so I have about 24 more hours of wearing the mask. But, so they ultimately go to Ways and Means Full Committee for a review. And at that point, they make a recommendation to town meeting, which is approximately at 5:00 on this chart right here. So once we make it through the budget here this evening, we'll be able to figure out how much in taxes, property taxes, we need to raise within the community. And then this upcoming fall, the Select Board will determine the property tax calculation and set the property tax rates for the residents and the businesses. And at that point, we will submit it to the Department of Revenue sometime in December for their approval prior to the actual tax bills going out. Next slide, please. Okay, so fiscal year 25 budget guidelines. We actually have about three major categories of budgets that we work with. The town operating, which is generally the town department's, school operating, which is the school department, and special education expenses. And our third category of expenditures is accommodated accounts. If you work in the private sector, it's more, I would say it's more akin to overhead costs or fixed costs for a business. That includes some really large budgets that are very difficult to control, including health insurance for all of our employees, town and school, as well as our retirees, debt, principal and interest, special education, tuitions and transportation, trash insurance, and things of those nature that, you know, don't necessarily belong to one department or they apply to all departments in some way. And it would be unfair to sort of budget them and hold one individual department responsible for what are generally pretty unpredictable increases. Oh, can you go back one more, Amy? I'm sorry. So at the guideline setting meeting, we had anticipated that our accommodated accounts may be going up as much as about 7%. That's fairly typical, as again, there's some big budget busters within that category. And we agreed to set the town and school operating at 4.5%. And our estimate was that we would have to increase the property tax levy by 5.25%. So the property tax levy would include, it's our primary revenue source, and it would include all the taxes issued to residents and businesses as a total. So we're able to do a little bit better than that as we sit here before you tonight. Both the town and the school met the operating budget guideline of 4.5%. We did able to do a little bit better on our accommodated accounts, so we got those down to about 6%. And as a result of that, we were able to lower the tax levy impact from about 5.25% down to 4.32. Next slide, Amy. These two pie charts here just show the general categories of revenue and expenditure within the community. As you can see, and similar to what Melissa said earlier, 48, on the left-hand side, 48% of our tax revenue and revenue, the total revenue that funds the budget, comes from the commercial property taxes. A smaller percentage, 28, coming from the residential. And then you can see some much smaller categories. Local receipts, which is about 9%. That would include, you know, your motor vehicle excise tax, your hotel tax, your meals tax, water revenues, and various other categories that we collect locally. And state aid is about 7%. That's a very much, much smaller part of our budget here in Burlington. We receive about 7% of our total expenditures we receive from the state as revenue. Can you go back one more time? That's okay, Amy. On the expenditures side, you can see that the school budget at about, let's see, town side about 23%, school side about 33%. And then the biggest category would be those accommodated accounts. And that's, again, employee benefits, pensions, debt, the community's debt, principal and interest, and other really large unpredictable categories. This next chart sort of details the trends that we've had recently in receiving state aid. We're projected to receive over $13.4 million this upcoming year. But as you can see, that only funds about 7, between 7% and 8% historically of the town's overall budget. So in terms of state aid, we do okay. But a lot of the funding formulas that the state uses to divvy up the revenue, because we have so much property value in the town, some of the formulas sort of work against us in that way. Next slide, please. Okay, in terms of the tax levy, the tax levy is our largest revenue source. Property taxes on both residential and commercial. This chart basically shows the past five years or so of levy increases. And the bottom sort of shows what the percentage increase on the average single-family home would be in a percentage basis. So last year for 2024, we raised the total levy by 5.4%. And the resulting impact on the average single-family home was 4.89%. And for 2024, the average single-family home was just under $726,000. So residential property is doing very well in town and continues to grow, and we expect that trend to continue for fiscal '25. Next slide, please, Amy. Okay, so here's sort of the magic here in what we're able to do by shifting a lot of the tax burden onto the commercial businesses. We end up with the 44th lowest residential tax rate in the entire state at 894 last year. And our commercial rate, 2581, is on the higher side, but it's very competitive to our business competitors, which would be, you know, your Waldams, your Lexington's, your Woburns, Bedford. Our commercial taxes are also very competitive for a premium commercial destination like Burlington, so. But they certainly picking up a good share of the burden from the residents there. Next one, please. All right, so I mentioned that magic potion that makes Burlington finances really, really tick in that you would think that because we have a large commercial sector that most of the property value is in commercial. Well, it's actually not. 36.7% last year of our property values, if you added up all the value of the property, was commercial and 63 residential. But when we shift that burden on, onto the commercial from the residents, what we end up doing is having, in terms of what's paid in taxes, the commercial businesses pay 62% of the tax levy, and the residents pick up 37.4% of the tax burden. So that is just a tremendous mathematical equation that works in the residents' benefits here in Burlington. So about 37% of the value is residential, but they only pick up 37, I'm sorry, 63% of the value is residential, but they only, but they pick up only 37% of the actual tax dollars. And on the business side, only 37% of the property value is in commercial, but they pay over 62% of the taxes. State average for residential, any, all communities, is 83% of the tax levy is residential and 17% commercial. So what we have here in town is very unique. The next slide delineates our trends in local receipts. As I indicated to you earlier, this includes categories such as motor vehicle excise tax, hotel tax, meals tax, water revenues, and a variety of other fees and permits, building permits that you may pay up at town hall. Historically, this has been about, picks up about 10% of our total budget. We had to reset this a couple of years ago at the beginning of COVID. We're very pleased to say that local receipts revenue has really bounced back. So it's back to where it was. The meals tax is now exceeding where we were at the beginning of the pandemic. And the hotel tax is just about getting back to where it was at the pandemic. And that one had really taken a huge hit at the, you know, hotels. No one was staying at hotels at that time. So, next one, Amy. This slide basically shows our financial indicators. On the left-hand side is sort of a rundown of our free cash. That was certified at $32 million in January. Town meeting utilized 1.7 million of that. If you were to pass everything that's proposed in free cash on the warrant at this town meeting, that's about $14 million. And that would leave us about 16, close to $17 million to carry forward to the future. We've been really working hard on that carry forward. As town meeting knows, we have some big projects upcoming, and we plan to utilize a portion of that free cash as we move forward to finance some of our bigger projects that are coming up. The next, in the middle, we have our stabilization fund, rainy day fund. That's been pretty static at $10 or $11 million over the years. That's a true rainy day fund. We haven't really used that for much of anything, holding it for an emergency, I would say. And the last category is excess levy capacity. So in Massachusetts, we have Proposition 2.5, which sets a limitation on how much that we can assess in property taxes. And I know as the administrator, we often get grief in terms of, and you probably do as well as being the appropriating body, that, you know, town meeting and the town's always spending all the money. Well, I would just tell you that we're $13 million below last year as to what we could spend under Prop 2.5. So I think that the town has shown great restraint over the years in utilizing that. It's a great emergency reserve for us, and it gives us a lot of flexibility as we move forward. So kudos to you, kudos to us. And if any of your constituents ask, you can tell them that we have $13 million in excess capacity. Next slide, please. Budget goals have remained very consistent over the years. We want to maintain the level of services provided in the community. We want to maintain or control fees. We've been prioritizing our investment in the town's infrastructure. You know, the majority of the budget is salaries and people that provide services, but we also do have to invest in the physical part of the town, buildings, water pipes, sidewalks, roads, those types of things. We do have long-term liabilities that we're managing in terms of the pension, and you've heard, and we discussed it, OPEB, retirees, health insurance liability. So we do have plans in place to take care of both of those long-term liabilities that we address annually on a year-to-year basis. And over the past couple of years of the pandemic, we've had this revenue replacement from Opera. So we've been able to add in, out of our Opera allotment, over a three-year period when the local receipts were down, we utilized a half a million dollars a year to sort of bridge that gap and be able to maintain services. So within the fiscal '25 budget, we're no longer using that. So we took that $500,000 out, and we're back to how we normally budget. So we do have a very sustainable and we do have a very balanced budget to present to you tonight. And Amy, is there? Okay, so concerns and considerations. We do have quite a few of those, as you might imagine. And a lot of it, you know, we talked a little bit about our commercial sector, and we want to make sure that that continues to stay vibrant and grow. But I think everybody knows that there's a lot of different things going on in the commercial sector. You know, retail's very different now. A lot of people order online. We're seeing a trend to not large department stores, but more of what you would call smaller boutique kind of stores. We feel as though that research sort of indicates that retailers are going to sort of downsize their space, and they're going to have a big online presence, but they're also going to want to have a place where their customers can come in and try things on and, you know, touch and feel different articles of clothing, for example. We all know that there's been a great change in office work. If you drive around town, we do have a lot of empty parking lots that used to have workers there. The trend we're sort of seeing there and monitoring is we do feel that companies are trying to get their employees back to work. We think there'll probably be more of a new normal, maybe of a three-day, you know, Tuesday through Thursday in the office and Monday, Friday, work from home. But we hear from a lot of the property owners that the companies are trying to get their employees to go back to the office. So that is a trend, but it's definitely something that we are very concerned about because, you know, commercial office buildings are valued on leases. So an empty building that doesn't have any tenants on it is not a very valuable building. Melissa mentioned it earlier. We plan to address a lot of these things. We'll look into really totally reimagine our whole commercial district. You'll be presented with that in September. And I would urge you to approach it with a very open mind. It's very big, it's very bold. But Burlington's really always taking steps to stay one step ahead in its commercial district. And, you know, we've been able to maintain really one of the best commercial districts in Massachusetts in terms of value and desirability and location. So we have a lot of great things going in our favor, and we just want to keep that magic going. So we want that district to be very vibrant, and we want people to be there. We want people to shop there and eat there and work there, as well as live there as well. We're also focusing on the town center. I know that many of you have taken place in some of the placemaking activities and beer gardens and things that we do to sort of highlight a lot of our small businesses in the town center. We're also working really hard to get the town positioned on the Transportation Improvement Plan, which is a federal plan we hope to seek federal funding to sort of totally reimagine Route 3A, the main artery that goes to the center of town. And that's something we'll be working on. It's a very long-term initiative, but we're very hopeful to get, they're starting to listen. to listen to us at the state about how important that roadway is, and we think that we can make it a lot safer, a lot more pedestrian-friendly, and a lot more suitable for all the wonderful businesses we have in the town center. Some of the things that we've done with debt service, I know that that's on a lot of Town Meeting member minds. We have a lot of big projects upcoming in the next few years. So we work really hard to try to work on the timing of the projects. Again, we do have been stockpiling free cash on a certain level so that we'll be able to utilize that to offset some of the costs of these projects. We typically, we make a lot of early payments if we can, we don't borrow the money if we don't have to. And Town Meeting has supported us in using free cash. I would say over the past 10 years, we've kept $30 million worth of projects off of our debt by paying free, paying in cash for them. So we appreciate your support in that initiative. And again, I would say over the past 10 years, we've kept, you know, a building off of the debt schedule just by utilizing those funds very strategically to pay cash for roadwork, sidewalks, water mains, and, and other smaller capital items that we would typically borrow for. And lastly, we've, you know, considered a lot of alternative payment options and funding sources whenever we can in terms of grants and, and gifts and, and different financing options. Amy, anything else? All right, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sagarino. I believe Mr. Eiler from Ways and Means would like to speak to us for a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I don't have fancy slides for this, but my understanding is if I talk very fast, we can get done with this meeting in one night. Or not. So Paul covered a lot of things, but so I'll just highlight a few things here. As he mentioned, at the beginning of the year, Ways and Means started working with all the town administration departments, boards, and committees, and working on the budget there. And the result is the budget and the financial articles you'll be voting on at this town meeting. So at the start of the process, there were guidelines that were agreed to for both operating budgets and accommodated. The same guideline was used for both the town side and the school side for operating. And the good news is, is that, as Paul showed, the budget presented is within those guidelines. So everyone held to the process there. The focus for this year continues to be maintaining level services across the board. So in particular, we weren't looking at expanding into new areas. And, you know, all departments had great ideas of things that could be done with more money, but the focus has been on keeping level services rather than spending more and expanding the services relative to last year. Excuse me. So what you'll see is that this reflected in the headcount again this year. So town government employees remain constant at 335, with only a .3 full-time equivalent increase. And the school FTEs actually decreased by one to 552. So the headcounts are reflective of that level services. So as Paul mentioned, we are working on a fair number of infrastructure projects. One, one that's, you'll be voting on tonight is Phase 2B of MWRA, and that will add an additional 3 million gallons of water capacity. Previous town meetings, you approved money for feasibility studies for three different projects, the police station, Fox Hill School, and high school. When we get to the police station article, I'll give a more in-depth talk about those projects and what the implications might be on those collectively. Unfortunately, one of the things that you will see is with these projects is that since the pandemic, everything has gotten vastly more expensive. So in particular, these type of projects are about two to three times more expensive than they were prior to the pandemic. And that's caused us to have to rethink what we're doing here. Things that would sort of fit into the budget well with the, with the debt don't fit in so well anymore. So in response, Ways and Means has spent a lot of time with the administration to refine our whole debt planning process. And it's helped inform our recommendations for various projects. And one, one of the outcomes that you'll see, that we'll talk about with the police station is to recommend that we have a Proposition 2 and 1/2 debt exclusion vote in our next local election, assuming that those, that the police station or Fox Hill projects are approved. And the point of this debt exclusion would be to help maintain the town's healthy excess levy capacity that Paul just talked about. So looking forward, we've seen that residential property values are continuing to increase, but there is a concern that due to things like work from home and the shifting retail environment, that there'll be a higher occupancy, a higher vacancy rate for our commercial properties and, you know, issues with leases, and that that could lead to reduced town revenues. But I'd like to note that these concerns are not currently realized. So in particular, revenues continue to increase in every category. Since the pandemic, as Paul showed, the state receipts have increased every year. With the pandemic and FY '21, local receipts went down 12 and 1/2%, which was painful. But as Paul showed, FY '25, we're projected to exceed pre-pandemic levels for our local receipts again, so they have recovered. Commercial properties continue to generate over 60% of our tax levy. The town has made a good commitment in terms of adapting and changing times, as Melissa showed in her presentation, working on several initiatives. The pivot to life science businesses is underway, and proposals for, you know, reimagining the Middlesex Turnpike corridor are in process. So overall, the town is actually in very good financial shape right now. Paul gave our free cash and stabilization balances, and together, they're 20, 23% of the budget that's being presented here, which is a very strong position to be in. So also mentioned, we have that significant unused levy capacity of 13 million, which we'd like to maintain as a cushion and provide headroom in the future, that if we do need to raise taxes, that we can do that without bumping up against a Prop 2 and 1/2 override situation. We're continuing our planned OPEB contributions that are now a part of the budget, and we don't need to vote on those every year. And that helps ensure that we don't have runaway liabilities. Our AAA bond rating has been reaffirmed. And I think one of the big concerns that we had last year was that the national economy was looking like a recession was almost a certainty. The good news is, it doesn't seem like that will happen, or it won't be nearly as bad as folks had predicted, so that's also a nice place to be. So we look forward to continuing to work on the town's finances, and thank you very
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. That concludes Article 1. Article 2 has been withdrawn, as has Articles 4, 5, and 19. So with those five out of the way, I'm sure we'll be out of here in 15 or 20 minutes. Excuse me? 2, 4, 5, and 19. So that brings us to Article 3, which is our operating budget. The way we have historically dealt with this article is as a consent article, which means that I will go through the, the items one at a time with the Ways and Means votes, select board votes, and any other votes I have. And if you wish to discuss that department budget further, you'll hold, and we'll put that aside. I'll go through the entire list. And those that have not been held, we'll total up what their total cost is, and we will vote them as a lump sum for those budgets that were not held. We will then go back to the individual ones that were held for discussion and vote them individually. Any questions on that? Okay. I'll start going down my list. Department 113, Town Meeting and Reports, $15,908, 0% increase. Ways and Means supported this 14-0. Select Board voted 5-0 in favor. Department 119, Legislative Committees, budget of $11,017, 0% increase. Ways and Means voted 12-0-0 in favor. Okay, there's a hold on 119. 122, Select Board and Town Administration, $999,985, 4.34% increase. Ways and Means supported this 12-0-0. Select Board voted 5-0-0 in favor. Department 135, Town Accountant, $517,615, 3.11% increase. Ways and Means voted 12-0-0. School Board, excuse me, Select Board voted 3-0-0. I seem to have skipped on, over 1, which is on one list, but not the other.
It's down at the bottom.
Oh.
Is it at the end, 115?
Yeah.
Do that at the end.
We do it at the end. I'll be corrected. We'll get, we'll get to 115 later. All right, that was...
To 135.
All right, we're at 135, Town Accountant, $517,615, 3.11% increase. Ways and Means supported this 12-0-0. Select Board voted 3-0-0 in favor of it. Department 141, Assessors Department, $465,741, a decrease of 4.31%, supported 12-0-0 by Ways and Means Committee. Department 145, Treasurer Collector, $785,663, a 3.83% increase. Ways and Means supported this 10-0-0. Select Board voted 5-0-0. I got a couple of numbers here. Oh, they're all, they're all separate. All right, Central Administration, operating budget, $169,210, a 22.62% increase. Ways and Means supported this 10-0-0. Select Board voted 5-0-0 in favor. Need grand total for 149? Unemployment, $100,000, wait, 0% increase. Ways and Means supported this 10-0-0. Select Board 5-0-0. Chapter 32B Employee Benefits, $17,165,850, 5.65% increase. Ways and Means supported this 10-0-0. Select Board voted 5-0-0 in favor. Medicare, $1.1470,000, an increase of 5.81%. Ways and Means supported this 10-0-0. Select Board voted 5-0-0 in favor. Other post-employee benefits, $1,113,144, an increase of 9.3%. Ways and Means supported this 10-0-0. Select Board voted 5-0-0 in favor. Town Insurance/Workers Comp, $1,500,000, an increase of 9.95%. Ways and Means supported this 10-0-0. Select Board voted 5-0-0 in favor. Financial Services and Audit, $70,000, an increase of 16.67%. Ways and Means voted 10-0-0 in favor. Select Board supported this 5-0-0. Legal Budget, now it's Department 151, $202,000, 0% increase. Ways and Means voted 12-0-0 in favor. Select Board voted 5-0-0 in favor. Department 152, Human Resources, $188,333, an increase of .43%. Ways and Means voted 12-0-0 in favor. Select Board voted 3-0-0 in favor. Department 155, MIS, $818,447, 3.85% increase. Ways and Means voted 10-0-0, and Select Board voted 5-0-0 in favor. Town Clerk, Department 161, $567,059, an increase of 8.19%. Ways and Means voted 14-0-0. Select Board, no vote. Department 162, Board of Registars, $16,650, an increase of 26.62%. Ways and Means supported this 14-0-0. Department 171, Conservation, $319,921, an increase of .9%. Ways and Means supported this 12-0-0. Select Board voted 3-0-0 in favor. Planning Department, Department 175, $489,821, an increase of 233, excuse me, 2.33%. Ways and Means supported this 12-0-0. Board of Appeals, Department 176, $13,731, 0% increase. Ways and Means supported this 14-0-0. Department 192, Town Facilities, $99,687, an increase of 1.55%. Ways and Means voted 12-0-0 to support. Okay, Department 210, Police Department, $10,542,088, an increase of 3.99%. Ways and Means supported this 12-0-0. Select Board supported this 4-0-0. Department 220, Fire Department, $10,254,983, an increase of 2.92%. 12-0-0 Select, excuse me, Ways and Means vote, 4-0-0. 12-0-0 Select, excuse me, Ways and Means vote, and 4-0-0 Select Board vote. Did I hear a hold on that? Department 241, Building Department. $737,940, an increase of 1.44%. Supported by Ways and Means 10-0-0, and by the Select Board 5-0-0. Department 244, Sealer of Waits and Measures. $17,269, an increase of 2.5%. Ways and Means vote 12-0-0. Select Board voted 5-0-0 in favor. Emergency Management. $13,600, a decrease of 42.37%. Supported by Ways and Means 12-0-0, and by the Select Board 4-0-0. Geez, you don't like people saving money? Department 300, Local Education. $64,690,145, an increase of 4.5%. Supported unanimously by the Ways and Means Committee, 12-0-0. Special Education. $15,206,11, an increase of 7.07%. Supported 12-0-0 by Ways and Means. Department 301, Shawshank Assessment. $2,806,65, a decrease of 5.9%. Supported 12-0-0 by the Ways and Means Committee. Essex Assessment. $112,775, an increase of 5.53%. Supported by Ways and Means 12-0-0. Department 400, Public Works. $11,285,109, an increase of 5.18%. Ways and Means supported 14-0-0. Select Board 5-0-0. Trash Removal. $3,304,700, an increase of 4.59%. Supported by Ways and Means 14-0-0, and by the Select Board 5-0-0. Streetlights. $360,500, 0% increase. 14-0-0 Ways and Means vote, 5-0-0 Select Board vote. DEP Drinking Water Assessment. $15,000, 0% increase. Ways and Means supported this 14-0-0. Select Board voted 5-0-0 in favor. Board of Health. $792,570, an increase of 3.63%. Ways and Means voted 12-0-0 in favor of this. Hazardous Waste Collection, $50,000, 0% increase. Ways and Means vote 12-0-0. Mosquito Control. $45,743, 0% increase. Ways and Means voted 12-0-0 in favor. Department 541, Council on Aging. $462,697, a decrease of 1.02%. Ways and Means voted 10-0-0 in favor. Select Board voted 3-0-0 in favor. Department 543, Veterans. $293,158, an increase of 1.56%. Supported by Ways and Means 10-0-0, and by the Select Board 3-0-0. Department 549. Youth and Family Services. $560,702, 3.29% increase. Ways and Means vote 14-0-0. Select Board vote 4-0-1. Department 590, Disability Access. $1,183, an increase of 17.4%. Ways and Means supported this 10-0-0, and Select Board 3-0-0. Library. $1,870,331, 4.5% increase. Ways and Means voted nine in favor, two opposed, and one abstention on this budget. Recreation. Ways and Means supported this 12-0-0. Hold on the recreation. Historical Commission. $10,024, an increase of 0.24%. Ways and Means supported this 14-0-0. Department 710, Debt Service. $8,772,664, an increase of 7.13%. Ways and Means supported this 10-0-0, and the Select Board 5-0-0. A hold on debt service. Department 115, Ways and Means Reserve Fund. $200,000, a decrease of 33.33%. Supported by Ways and Means 12-0-0. Department 901, Male Sex Retirement. $14,291,966, an increase of 6.63%. Ways and Means supported this 10-0-0, and the Select Board 5-0-0. Negotiated Settlements. $349,000, supported by Ways and Means 12-0-0, and by the Select Board 5-0-0. Hold on negotiated settlements. Local Transportation. $100,000, no increase. Supported by Ways and Means 10-0-0, and the Select Board 5-0-0. And Capital Budget. $400,000, 0% increase. Ways and Means vote 10-0-0. All right, soon as I get a grand total for those not held. 155. And zero cents.
And zero cents.
Okay. So for those budgets not held, the grand total is $155,239,341. Any discussion on this number? See none? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, now let's go back to those that were held. Legislative Committees. Was there a question on that budget? Yes, Shafan. Mr. Wong, please.
Shafan Wong, Precinct 4. Regarding Legislative Committees, noticed that land use had a budget that doubled in 2024, and then doubled again in 2025. Seeking to understand more information regarding those two years of doubling of costs.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The total amount for the budget is the same, and then what every year we try to do is sort of right-size based upon how many hours were utilized by each committee during that year. So the total lump is the same, and then we just try to redistribute it based upon actual committee usage.
Any further questions on that? See none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor? Those opposed? Legislative Committee's budget passes. The next one held was Fire Department. Questions on the Fire Department budget? Yes.
Thank you. Michelle Huntun, Precinct 1. I just have concerns about the amount of overtime included in this budget, and it doesn't seem to have changed much over the past few years, but we've been told previously that it was due to staffing issues. The amount in this budget for overtime is $755,404 more than the police overtime budget, despite the Fire Department having 35 fewer employees. We were told last year that there were retirements coming along, and these were predictable. And the information we're given here even says that Burlington Fire Department's desirable to join, so I'm just wondering why we aren't taking care of this by hiring full-time employees instead of paying out 14% of this budget to overtime?
Mr. Dizio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Dizio, Assistant Town Administrator. In the Fire Department budget, the overtime for next year is actually projected to be a little bit less than this year. You'll see that 1.4 million, so I believe there were a couple questions wrapped into one, so I'll see if I get them all. So there is a slight decrease there, which is good news for us. I've been up here telling you for the past few years that this is a real problem for us, and like you said, hiring has been a problem. We're currently in the process of hiring a few, to fill a few vacancies, which we expect in the next month or so. We expect to be, two of them started today, so that's great news. However, it is, it is, has been a problem and continues to be a problem. That's, that's not the only problem. The, the contract last year, what I told you when I was up here, there's a, the contract calls for a minimum staffing level. That's just a few below the total on each shift. That also causes a problem for us. I can't remember if they, what the third question was. I think it was comparative to the Police Department. I think it's, happens a lot where you, where people compare both. They're completely different jobs, but since they both protect and save our lives regularly, we compare them. There are almost the same amount of officers in, sworn officers as police and fire. I think the difference is one or two. So it isn't, it isn't quite as drastic as 33. The difference in the amounts is that the police have an opportunity to charge some of their overtime to other sources, whether it be state grants or federal dollars or things like that. So the total amount spent is probably much closer than what we have to budget, but this is just what comes out of the operating budget.
Anything further on this budget? See none? Shall we vote on this? All those in favor? Opposed? Budget carries. Thank you. Emergency Management. There was a question on this one. Yes, sir. That Alex?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Alex Ruffield, Precinct 5. So I was just wondering, the main reason for this cut seems to be that we're eliminating the one position of director, so I was wondering, you know, what happens to their duties? Are they still necessary, and if so, who's going to be doing them?
Mr. Dizio, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The good news is we're not eliminating anybody, and the work, the bad news is the work's not going away either. The assistant, the, the amount in that budget for $10,000 was an amount that was paid to the Assistant Chief as a stipend to be the coordinator for emergency management. He'll still be doing that, just that we are going to fund that in the operating budget now, so it was in the amount that was approved for the Fire Department. That's included in the salary line, so the work's not going away, and the job's not going away.
Anything further? Okay, let's vote on it. All those in favor? All those opposed? Emergency Management passes. Recreation budget was held. $2,224,822, an increase of 5.18%. Questions?
Shafan Wong, Precinct 4. There seems to be more than a 10% increase in overtime, so seeking to understand the context of overtime within a Recreation Department.
I guess the Recreation Director can handle that question. Brendan?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We have nine maintenance employees who have scheduled overtime during the year, in the, in the summer months from April, actually from April through November. And then there is overtime in there for bathrooms on the weekends, trash coverage on the weekends, throughout the, we basically started end of April, and we'll go through October, cleaning the bathrooms at Simons Park, at Regan Park, as well as emptying the trash cans around town, because it doesn't stop on the weekends, it just continues to build up. So that's where the overtime comes in.
Ms. Wong, follow-up?
That explanation seems to be fixed, so I'm asking about what part of that is dynamic to explain the incremental 10%, right? Because those would seem to be pretty similar across calendar years.
As their salaries increase, according to their contract, we have to adjust the overtime.
Anything further? See none? All those in favor? Thank you. Debt Service. $8,000, excuse me, $8,772,664. There was a question on it. Mr. Ruffield?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Alex Ruffield, Precinct 5.
Alex Ruffield, Precinct 5. So it seemed like, you know, the debt's going, the debt service costs are going up 7%. Is that for anticipation of the major projects coming up? And if it's not, what, what's driving that increase, and how are we going to prepare for those projects coming up?
Oh, there it is. The debt service line at present just accounts for our current debt. So our current debt payments, any short-term financing that we may intend to do, which would have an interest payment for next year. So we've sort of, in anticipation of all the infrastructure needs of the town, we've been ramping up the debt a little bit every year to sort of get to the level where we need to sort of sustain, you know, the upcoming projects. So that line is just, it's natural increases in the debt based upon our existing debt that we've already borrowed. So there's nothing, nothing special in there for the future at this point.
Further questions on debt service? Seeing none, let's put it to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Negotiated settlements. Here is a question.
One, two, three, there you go. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nolan Glantz, Precinct 1. So I got a little bit of a two-part question, which, this is for, for given departments that have contract negotiations, I believe. Is that what the settlements are for?
Mr. Denizio?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, this is the account that we fund any contracts that aren't settled to date. All of our union collective bargaining agreements are settled for next year, however, our AMP folks, that's our administrative and professional folks, the department heads and professional staff, they, they aren't in a union, so they have to, the comp plan has to be approved by town meeting every year. So that's where we put that money in the operating budget, so we have it when it is approved.
I see. So this is for the primary department heads and other administrative staff, for, once those are, once those negotiations are completed, that money will get essentially added to their respective departments' budgets?
Correct. It's undistributed at the time, and then when it's approved, it will be distributed to each of the departments.
Okay. And a follow-up, if I may? So the math, if I'm thinking about it correctly, this $395,000 essentially gets, once it's voted, and once those are negotiated, divvied up and parceled out to increase somewhat the percent on each of those departments that had someone with an increase, right? So those percents that are listed for each aren't final, they're partial, pending addition of part of the 395,000. Is that how that works?
Correct. The overall budget for the town doesn't increase, but it may, it will affect each department that has a transfer coming into it, yes.
Thank you.
Again, anything further? Seeing none? All those in favor? Capital, negotiated settlements line item passes. And that, ladies and gentlemen, concludes... Get the vote on what? So we have a government that can work next, this coming year. So, the next article is going to be Article 6. Actually, I have another piece of business to take care of before we get to that. Sometime tomorrow, oh, excuse me, sometime on Wednesday, we should be getting to the, a discussion on the Police Department, the new building. There are three articles that are associated with it. I think it's Article 20, and then Articles 32 and 33 are zoning-related. Because this is going to take up, or I expect this to take up a reasonable amount of time, I would hate for us to get to this late in the session. So this is at your discretion, but I would ask you to, to consider making a motion that we take it up as a, take up these three articles as our first issue of, of business on Wednesday. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Done. Thank you very much. That'll help us all in our, as we move this meeting forward. And Myrna, are you still here? I haven't heard from you. There's 106 people here. All right? And Myrna has asked that we, we take a 30-second stretch break every hour, which would come up right about now, so everyone can, can stretch and stand up and say hello to your neighbor or not. You know, we got to keep the blood moving, keep limber. All right. We've had our stretch, so let's get back to business, please. Myrna, I might not do this again. All right, and, and for any, any folks sitting, sitting in the back over, over in the corner here, if you got here late, make sure you have checked in, and I have asked people to sit in the center section, please, as used to be our requirement pre-COVID, trying to Let me get this, stay there. You know, I got way too much paper up here. Three, four, five. Article 6 is to authorize revolving accounts, has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee, and it is as presented in the warrant. And, Mr. Denizio, are you going to explain what this article is?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So this is the annual article we do every May, started back about five or six years ago with the Municipal Modernization Act that required towns to make their departmental revolving accounts into a bylaw. So what we have to do now, each May, we have to come back and we have to revo, or reauthorize the total spending limit in those accounts. So this is something you're used to seeing every year, and there's no change in any of the limits from last year.
Questions on this article?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jack Kelly, Precinct 7. I'm trying to compare what's in the warrant to the sheet that was given to us about the revolving accounts. The last one there, Meadowbrook School, is not in the list, but there are several on the list that are not in the warrant. Could somebody explain what the difference is?
Mr. Denizio, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I actually answered this question for another town meeting member today, so the one that says just improvements, and I think it's maybe the fourth line down, is actually the Meadowbrook School Maintenance and Improvements. When it went from an Excel file to a PDF, it truncated the name, it just came out as improvements. So the, that, that is the Meadowbrook School revolving account.
Mr. Denizio?
Mr. Moderator, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kelly, if I missed that part of the question. This is only for departmental revolving accounts. There's other ones on the list that, if they're revolving accounts, so that list includes all special revenue accounts, which would include donation accounts, but the revolving accounts that aren't on the list would be, there would be another statute that allows for them, for instance, like school lunch or something like that. There's a separate statute that allows for that. These departmental revolving accounts are ones that is not a separate statute that allows us to segregate those revenues.
Mr. Ruffield, again? And who else?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Alex Ruffield, Precinct 5. So from what I can tell, the Meadowbrook School is closed, so I'm wondering, what exactly is it being used for, and what are the plans for the future?
Mr. Sagorino, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the town currently leases the Meadowbrook School to the Mount Hope Christian Academy, so the lease payments go into the revolving fund, and then we're currently utilizing them to pay back a bond for a boiler that was our responsibility on the building from several years ago.
Anything further? Seeing none? All those in favor? Article 6 passes. Brings us to Article 7, capital budget. Last year, we tried to do these as a consent article like we did, just did with the operating budget. It failed miserably, because every, virtually every one of them got held. So we'll go through them into, one by one. We'll go through the, through the votes of Ways and Means and capital budget, comments from Ways and Means, and then we'll vote on, on, we'll discuss and then vote on them. So, first one. Phase 3, yeah, 7-01, Fire and Police, Phase 3 Communications Infrastructure, $955,000 to be spent under the authority of the Select Board. Ways and Means, please. Mr. Eiler.
Moderator. So this, this has been a multi-year project that's been going on. Last year, we had Phase 2 for $700,000. This year is Phase 3, the final phase. It's broken into three main parts. There's radios for the Fire Department for $685,000, radios for the Police at $135,000, and fire call box receivers for $135,000. So the current radios for Fire Department from 2011, and the Police are from 2006, so both of these are, have a, near their end of life, essentially. They're no longer supported, it's hard to find parts and get replacement batteries and so forth. So the number of radios here is 75 for Fire and 72 for Police, so it's a complete replacement for all the officers plus a few spares. One of the things you may notice is that the Police radios are 1.9,000, whereas the Fire are 9.1,000, so they're about four times as more expensive. That's because the Fire radios need to be much more ruggedized for the environments that they're used in, with heat and so forth. They did try various models of radios, so they, they've compared and decided these were the best ones. They are interoperable with the current radios, so the current one could conceivably use as spares. In general, the Fire Department in particular doesn't tend to do this, because they like to train with the specific radios they'll be using. The last thing you want when you're in a dark, smoking environment is to be trying to figure out which model of radio you have. So the Fire and Police can't communicate with each other on these. With the fire call box receivers, the commercial and apartment buildings in town will have call boxes. There are no longer any on town poll, town polls, and the Fire Department has the receivers for these call boxes. There's three total units between the two fire stations that we have. The reason that there's an extra one is for backup. The current ones are from 2008 and 2017, and again, they're becoming expensive to repair because of their age, hence the need to replace them. So Ways and Means did vote to support this, 12-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Mr. Denizio, I believe you have the votes for capital budget? I'll get to them.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Capital budget voted 7-0.
Yes, it seems our capital budget chair had to leave, and he gave the votes to John. Selectmen?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Select Board voted 5-0 in support.
Thank you. Anything further to say on this, from anyone? Okay, questions on, so we'll move to the discussion. Mr. Boyven?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyven, Precinct 1. I just find this as presented very confusing. You know, it says the item for, I guess this is for the firefighters themselves, the radios are 685,000. The, the first page shows under the heading of all com, 75 radios for $543,000, but the next page shows 72 radios for $135,000. So I'm confused which one we're buying, and why aren't we buying the ones that are a quarter of the price? And just the way it's presented, I mean, I can't find what comes up to a total of $685,000. I'd like to commend the school department. Every budget they put forward has shown exactly total, and, you know, plus 10%, and it was clear. This isn't clear at all to me, what we're buying and how you come up with the number. Thank you.
Chief?
Seeing as our number is the larger number, our Seeing as our number is the larger number, our radios are much more ruggedized. They have to be intrinsically safe in order to operate in a flammable atmosphere. If we were to use the Police radios where we work, the building could blow up. So that's the main reason why ours are more expensive. And there are three separate items in this. The Police radios are 135, the Fire radios, and then the alarm box receivers.
Seeing nothing? All those in favor? Opposed? 7-02, a rescue ATV, $65,000 to be spent under the direction of the Select Board. Mr. Eiler, please.
It was so good last time. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So this is a rescue ATV. It's more than just your average ATV. It carries four people. It has a rear bed on it that includes a water tank and fire hose and a gurney to transport a potential victim. This would provide access to places that a truck could not easily reach, such as in, you know, places in Landlocked Forest or Mill Pond Reservoir. The alternative is that equipment would have to be carried in as opposed to driven in with the ATV, or victims would have to be carried out, which has happened in the past. It's street legal, so it would be driven to the scene. It doesn't require a trailer or anything. The majority supported this 8-4-0 as a useful, improved capability. Since there was a significant number of people that voted against it, I'll just point out the minority felt that this was an expensive solution for the problem, and that there were a fair number of wants as opposed to needs included in this, and that something simpler could perhaps have addressed this problem. But the majority did support this 8-4-0.
Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Mr. Moderator, I'm sorry. I thought it was one of my Select Board meetings. This actually, the Select Board voted 5-0 in favor of this. This discussion, I actually, I'm the Fire Department Subcommittee, and I actually had a discussion with then-Chief Fire, Fire Chief Patterson, and that was prior to the pandemic. So it was before 2020. And what started that conversation between him and I was, there had been a rescue up by the reservoir, up in the reservoir, which resulted in injuries. Firefighters got injured because they physically had to go in and carry the patient out. And we started a discussion about the Landlocked Forest, the Mary Cummings Park, construction sites, athletic fields, inclement weather. And we were gonna try to put this on back in 2020, but then we saw the unknown results of what was gonna happen to, with COVID. So we kind of tabled it. And now here we are, at least, you know, post-COVID now, trying to get something that the firefighter can use to access all of Burlington. The Landlocked Forest, construction sites, roads that are shut down, the Fourth of July Parade. You can't drive a truck through the crowds. You can get a Gator or a UTV through the crowds at the Fourth of July Parade or any major event. So that's the reason we wanted to present this, and again, we voted unanimously in favor. Thank you.
Questions from the, from the capital budget, yes. Okay, Mr. Caskey, are you gonna take care of the votes? Thank you.
Gary Caskey, Precinct 6. I'm Vice Chair of the Capital Budget. We voted 7-0 on this.
Thank you. We'll move on to the discussion for this. Yes, sir, right here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kevin Spielberg, Precinct 4. If this was purchased two years ago, how many times would this have been used when something else could not have been used instead?
Chief.
I don't have that stat with me. I can imagine very few, but we also have the Jaws of Life, which are very expensive, and we rarely use them. We also have fire trucks, and we don't use them every day, but we use them. It's simply another tool for us to use. And as was mentioned, the longer you have to carry someone, even if it's four-by-four guys, the incidence of injury to our guys, incidence of dropping a patient increases. And this is just to get us closer to a patient. It's not gonna get us always to the patient, but closer. It can also assist us in firefighting. We've had fires up at the Landlocked Apostle that went for days on end. Mill Pond, the Nike site. The high tension wise, I mean, it's anywhere, open space, so.
Paula Fain.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Where will this be stored, do you think? And will there be a number of people who will be trained to use it? Or will this be global, that all personnel can use it? Thank you.
It is likely to be at headquarters. Everyone will be trained. All of our firefighters are trained to ride in every seat.
Ms. Bonisara. Am I identifying the wrong person here? Sorry. Sitting beside the previous speaker. You know, I'll get there.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. ZY, Precinct 5. Do you know any other towns that, who has a rescue ATV? Just wondering, like nearby towns?
Specifically, Bedford has the same brand we're looking at. Lexington has an older model, but of course Lexington is gonna be purchasing a mini ambulance and a mini fire truck. We are doing it in one vehicle.
Can you hear me? How often do you know, like how often do other towns use ATV?
I don't know how often. We would be using it, so it would be a stretch for me to guess for other towns. But I know I did speak to Bedford. They use it for their functions that they have in town. They just did a tough ruck, and they used it for that purpose. They had the bike lanes, the bike paths going through town, so they use it for there. Lexington uses it for there.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Further questions? Is that Ms. Asher?
Yes, thank you, Moderator. Mr. Moderator, my name is Kate Asher, Precinct 4. This is just a comment. I've been hiking in Mill Pond and also in some areas of Weston for about 10 years, pre-COVID, and now. And my observation is that the traffic has increased tremendously, about at least four or five times. Just some input with my observations.
Thank you. Ms. Kim.
My question is to Ways and Means.
Excuse me. Name and precinct?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, sorry.
We'll get there.
Christine Kim, Precinct 4. So there were four people who declined in the vote. Can you tell me what the dollar value of the conflict was that created the no vote? Like, are we talking about $20,000? Are we talking about two?
Mr. Eiler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I mean, it's hard to put a dollar amount on what would have converted those to yeses. This is 65,000. I think the base ATV was about 20,000. So you can see that there's, you know, quite a bit added on to this to turn it into a rescue ATV. So I guess somewhere between 20 and 65 is the answer to that. We didn't try to answer that specific question, but I think, yeah, it boils down to the cost seemed high for the added value. A cheaper solution, you know, if it was 20,000, I'm sure everyone probably would have voted yes, is my guess. So somewhere in between there is the answer.
Mr. Campbell.
Chris Campbell, Precinct 1. I'm also on Town Meeting, excuse me, Ways and Means. I was one of the no votes. My reasoning, as a person who really enjoys Mill Pond, this vehicle couldn't access all of Mill Pond with the various stone walls, the trees that are down, and I didn't see it being a necessity or need for what we have and where we need to spend our money at the moment. It's great to want, and I think that there, we could absolutely use it if we had it for town parades, but if I'm thinking for what we need for emergencies, I was thinking fiscally here.
Mr. Boyven.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyven, Precinct 1. As a slowly aging member of Burlington, I find a few things that give me great comfort in this community, and one of them is that we have a well-funded, well-equipped, and well-trained Fire Department, and I would recommend we purchase this vehicle in order to upgrade the stuff that we have, and I commend you for that, Chief.
Anything further? Ms. Huntoun.
Michelle Huntoun, Precinct 1. Basically, a two-parter. I'm just wondering if you could speak to the last time when we did have our firefighters have to go into one of these areas and carry someone out, how long ago that might have been? And also, the second part being, if there are other towns nearby, like Bedford or Lexington, who have equipment like this, is it a situation where their equipment could come in in a mutual aid type situation? We could use theirs rather than spending the money and buying a new one for Burlington?
Chief.
Off the top of my head, one at the Landlocked Apostle, one at Mill Pond, victims within the last eight years. As for the using other towns' assets, I personally don't agree with using another town's assets. If there were more than one victim, then we could also use them. We do have mutual aid agreements to share fire trucks, to share our tower. We have a large 10-alarm mutual aid system, and this asset would be added to that. We have a boat that we would share with Woburn if they had a problem on Horn Pond. They have their own boat, but it's, my opinion is that having it here is better than calling out, because we never know what they're gonna be dealing with at that time.
Sharon Laurie, Precinct 3. I have a couple of thoughts. If someone's life is in danger, and it's someone that you know, you would want all the assets there to save that person. My question to you, Chief, is what would be the warranty on the ATV?
We haven't gotten to that part, but I did ask the question. It's a one-year warranty.
So a one-year warranty for $65,000 is a lot, to be honest, but someone's life is priceless, and that's how I would look at this. And if we could help save one life, or maybe have our assets go to someone else in an emergency, I think we all need to consider the times that we are in today, and our world is insane. And knowing that our world is insane and anything could happen, having the assets at hand, I think, would be beneficial. My thoughts.
Mr. Hartling. It's been, the question has been moved to, or there's been a motion to move the question. This is not debatable. Takes a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of moving the question? All those opposed? It's clear two-thirds in favor of moving the question. So that brings us to voting on the main motion. All those in favor? All those opposed? It is clear majority in favor. 7-03, for the Fire Department, Command Car, $78,000 to be spent under the direction of the Select Board. Mr. Eiler, please, for Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is because car C-6 is very rusty. It's a 2010, so it's, what, 14 years old with 92,000 miles on it. It's projected that it won't pass inspection this year, so it's pretty important to do something here. The plan is to replace C-6, which is used by a training officer, with current C-3, which is the shift commander's car. And then the shift commander's C-3 would be replaced with this new vehicle, which would be a Chevy Tahoe SUV, as the police pursuit vehicle version. So Ways and Means thought this made a lot of sense. Do keep our cars in working order, and support this 12-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Mr. Caskey, please.
Capital Budget voted this 7-0.
Thank you. Select Board. Mr. Tigas.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Select Board voted unanimously 5-0-0 for this, for the reasons that Mr. Eiler stated.
Any further comments from the administration of the Fire Department? Open for discussion. Questions from the body? Seeing none, put this to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. 7-04, for a light at Wind Street and Mountain Road, $400,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Select Board. Ways and Means, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So a light has been considered for this intersection since FY14, actually, so it's been quite a while that it's been under consideration. Last May, Town Meeting approved $100,000 to evaluate and do design work for this light as part of that evaluation by the traffic engineer. They did determine that, in fact, for safety reasons, it's important to have a light here. So Ways and Means agreed with that and supported this 10-0-0.
Capital Budget.
Capital Budget voted 7-0 on this.
Thank you. Select Board. Mr. Morandi.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We voted 5-0 in favor of this. Being down there every day is where I am every day, so this is definitely something we need in that area. Traffic's crazy down there. I think this is a I think this is a great article for us.
Discussion. Questions on this article?
Blaze Lever, precinct six. Just a question. Says the useful life of this traffic signal is 20 years, and the cost is $400,000. So, after 20 years, is it going to be another thing in around a half million dollars? Or is it going to be cheaper to replace after 20 years, once the initial installation of the hardware is done?
Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, the useful life, the short answer is no. The $400,000 is for the capital installation of it. A lot of the equipment will need to be replaced, but it won't need, it won't require the capital
Further questions on this? Yes, Sally up there. Ms. Willard, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sally Willard, precinct four. Saw in the backup, there's just an overhead picture, like a Google map satellite shot. Will this intersection include sidewalks for, or rather, crosswalks for people to get across the street? And will there be any sidewalks done on the other side? Thank you.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It will include crosswalks with protected crossings. We will also be constructing sidewalk ramps and the necessary sidewalks just immediately adjacent to the ramps, but not that much further away.
Further questions?
Hi, Jamie Greitzer, precinct one. Also, working there for the last 15 years. I'm wondering, is that a big area for accidents? Is that the reason for this? Has it been a safety issue? Because I worry about the traffic, especially with Funeral Home so close by and the backup and trying to get in and out of the highway on an off-ramp right there. It could be a nightmare already in the morning, and I'm one person, but I've just never seen an accident there, so I'm not sure if it's like a heavy area for accidents, warranting such a need.
Mr. White, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It is, so when the engineers go out and do a traffic warrant analysis, there's a number of different warrants that they consider. Accidents is one of them. It is a higher accident-prone area. One of the other considerations, I believe, is the high amount of left turns that are unprotected that come out of there. Right turns are obviously less dangerous. Those two are the large leading factors.
Thank you, sir. Anything further? Mr. Sacks.
John Sacks, precinct seven. I live down on Mountain Road, and I can tell you, taking a left out of Mountain Road on Wind Street is one of the most frightening experiences that I go through pretty much every day. We need that light. We really do.
Anything further? Yes, sir. Right here.
Daryl Intress, precinct six. I was wondering where the $400,000 figure came from there? Would it be a bid process for contractors?
Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I may have missed the first part of the question, but the $400,000 is an engineer-designed estimate, and we're working on finishing the design, at which point, it will be competitively bid and awarded to the lowest qualified contractor.
Anything further? Seeing none? Let's put this to a vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? 7-05, Terrace Hall Station VFD replacement, $40,000 to be spent under the select board. Mr. Ayler, please. Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, a VFD is a variable frequency drive, which may not mean much more. So, this is the high-power drive electronics that control the actual sewage pump. There's four VFDs at Terrace Hall, and this is the last of the four that needs to be updated. The Terrace Hall Station moves two-thirds of the town's sewage, so I think we'll all agree that's pretty important. One thing you may notice is the quote is 30.5,000, and the request is for 40,000. The reason that there's more margin here than in other articles is that just from past experience, DPW has seen that this is where the quotes tend to come in, so they want to make sure that they don't ask for too little and have to come back. Ways and Means support this 10-00.
Thank you, Mr. Ayler. Mr. Kasky, please.
Capital budget voted 7-0 on this.
Thank you. Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Select Board voted 5-0 in support of this one.
Questions? Discussion from the body? Seeing none? We'll put this to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Looks like everyone's in favor of getting sewer out of town. Very good. Thank you. 7-06, water meter replacement program, $50,000 to be spent under the discretion of the select board. Mr. Ayler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, the current water metering system is developed in 2010. Not surprisingly, a good metering system allows for accurate billing and accounting for water issues properly. This year, the unaccounted water usage was 7% to 8%, but it was greater than 10% last year for the first time in quite a while. One of the consequences of going over 10% is it can lead to mass DEP enforcement actions, so we really want to avoid that. Currently, 70% of the meters are 10 to 12-years-old and are nearing their end of life. The purpose of this article is to design a new system and generate an RFP for the actual replacement. So, this is not performing the actual replacement of all the meters, but to design a new system. And the amount was based on the previous project costs is where that quote came from. So, Ways and Means support this 10-00.
Thank you, Mr. Ayler. Mr. Kasky, please.
Capital budget, 7-0 on this one.
Thank you, sir. Select Board. Mr. Tigges.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Select Board voted 5-0 in favor of this. We want to make sure we keep up with our critical infrastructure maintenance and replacement planning, because that's a priority for the select board.
Questions from the body? Seeing none? All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Article passes. 7-07, drainage repair and system stream cleaning, $200,000 to be spent under the select board. Ways and Means, please. Mr. Ayler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is an article that we have every year, so for basically this amount. It costs $375 a foot to do vector dredging of the streams. It's fairly labor-intensive, because it needs to be shovel-fed. So, the environmental folks don't like us to just go in there with big excavators and, you know, dredge down these streams. So, it's a fairly labor-intensive process. This amount of money at that price would be about 530 feet. So, because it's seasonal work, in general, the idea is that this money is requested essentially a year ahead of time. And at this point, DPW spent at a slightly higher rate than 200K a year, so the money's definitely being spent on this. Ways and Means support this 10-00.
Thank you, Mr. Ayler. Mr. Kasky?
Capital budget, supported this 7-0.
Thank you. Select Board. Ms. Carley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Select Board voted 5-0 in favor of this article.
Thank you. Discussion from the body?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dave Waddila, precinct one. This really seems like a maintenance item rather than a capital expenditure. Maybe we can get an understanding from the accountant, accounting department, why this is always considered a capital expenditure instead of just maintenance of our stream
Mr. Denizio, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. White may be able to answer better if I mess anything up, or Mr. Hayes, but as far as accounting, this, we see it as sort of an optional thing to give Town Meeting the option of funding it or not as a separate warrant article each year, but also, what they like to do is to build up the funds with the 200 not being enough to do a major project. They may need to use two-years' worth of those funds in order to do it, and you wouldn't be allowed to do that in the operating budget that will close back to, and turn it to free cash at the end of the year.
I'm still, don't understand why this isn't just a maintenance item, right? We're maintaining streams. I think it would fit that definition. So, no response, other than, we like to pool the money and just do it all at once. I'm sure there's other things that we do on a biannual basis that isn't a capital budget item, correct? So, why wouldn't this just fit in the operating budget?
Mr. Hayes.
Mr. Moderator. So, fiscal year versus calendar year. Calendar year obviously goes 2024. Our construction season starts in May, ends around October, November. Fiscal year cuts off in July, so you're kind of jumping horses midstream. And also, we can take the money, any money that's left over from this construction season, from the stream cleaning, and can roll it into next year's stream cleaning. So, it's just logistically, you know, bidding it and keeping the same contractor onboard through the construction season is much easier than trying to put it in the operating budget and spend it all within the fiscal year, because, you know, like I said, or like Mr. Denizio said, we can roll that money forward if we have to do a bigger project. Otherwise, we're chopping everything up into exactly $200,000 increments, and then we might not get it all done, or we might get a little chunk of it done, and then we lose that excess
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Shari Ellis, precinct three. I highly support this article, and I would recommend that we consider upping this article. This has been $200,000 for 10 years, and the price of doing this goes up. We get less footage done. We have more to do, and I know that this is really critical, important work for residents and to keep the streams clean around their home. So, I would suggest or recommend that we consider upping this next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Further questions? Comments from the body? Seeing none? We'll put this number to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. 7-08, vehicle replacement, the DPW, $662,000 to be spent under the select board. Mr. Ayler, please. Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is part of the regular DPW vehicle replacement program that has been in the capital plan for quite a while. Last year, for instance, we spent $607,000 on this program. So, we have five vehicles being replaced this year. The details are listed in the backup, but their ages vary from a 2009 to a 2015. So, these are reasonably old vehicles. The average price is above 100K here, as you'll notice, and that's because they're not just trucks. They have, you know, some interesting add-ons, like they either have a dump capability, or a sander, or a crane. So, these are all things that are making them more expensive than just a regular truck. So, Ways and Means supports the idea of keeping our vehicles not too old and in working order with 10-00.
Thank you, Mr. Ayler. Mr. Capitol budget, please.
Capitol budget voted 7-0.
Thank you. Select Board. Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Select Board voted 5-0 in favor, obviously, in the attempt to keep our fleet replacement plan on schedule.
Thank you. Questions from the body? Seeing none? All those in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. 7-09, for the Recreation Department, a leaf vacuum towed behind. $20,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Recreation Commission.
Would you like to hear from me?
Mr. Ayler, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, this is basically a huge vacuum cleaner. It gets towed behind a truck, sucks up the leaves, and shoots them into the truck for cleaning up leaves all around municipal properties. The current one is over 10-years-old and is frequently repaired now, so it's definitely time for it to be replaced. It's heavily used. Ways and Means support this 9-00.
Thank you, Mr. Ayler. Mr. Kasky, please.
Capitol budget, 7-0.
Thank you.
Recreation Commission did pass this. 5-00? 5-00.
Thank you. Questions from the body on this? Seeing none? We'll put it to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. 7-10, under the Recreation Department, a skid steer, $68,000. Mr. Ayler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, this is basically a tracked bobcat vehicle. The idea is that a tracked vehicle is easier on the fields than a wheeled vehicle would be. This is not a replacement. This is a new vehicle, so it's a new capability. But, as I say, it is easier on the fields. It works in smaller spaces better. So, I felt that this would be an important improvement to our ability to keep our fields in good condition. The Rec Department does, their budget does include acquiring a trailer so that this can be moved around, so they've considered that issue also. Ways and Means felt this was a great idea and supported 9-00.
Thank you. Mr. Kasky, please. Capitol budget.
Capitol budget voted 7-0.
Thank you.
Recreation Commission did approve this 5-00.
Thank you. Questions from the body? Yes, Ms. Wang. I got it that time, didn't I?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just have one question. So, since it's a new request, what was used before to do all the field maintenance, spring-fall cleanups, and the snow removal and more? Thank you.
Mr. Egan. Mr. Egan?
We have two other tractors, but they're oversized for what we would use this for, working on ballfields, spreading playground fiber on playgrounds, and then during, when we do get snow, they are used to clear sightlines in parks, the pathways, walking paths in parks as well. So we've used larger equipment. It doesn't do the job as well as we would be able to do it with this skid steer.
Further questions on this? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. 7-11, for the Recreation Department, a zero-turn mower for $16,500. Mr. Heiler, please.
It was so good. Oh, there we go. All right. So the Rec Department has two mowers that are basically in continuous use from March through October to maintain the grass, obviously. This is to replace the older two, which is 2012, so it's 12 years old. Since we want to continue using all our grassy areas, Ways and Means supported this 9-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Kasky, Capital Budget?
Capital Budget, voted 7-0.
Thank you. Recreation Commission?
Recreation Commission also approved this 5-0-0.
Thank you. Questions on this? Seeing none, put it to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. 7-12, for the Recreation Department, a ballfield groomer for $40,000. Mr. Heiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. If you're looking to back up, you'll see that this is, think of an extremely large lawn tractor with things that you can drag behind and a thing in front that helps keep the fields nice and flat and safe to play on for both baseball and softball. We only have one of these. It's 15 years old currently, and it's clearly at end of life. The plan is to rehab it so it will limp through to spring, but it's time to replace this. Ways and Means supported this 10-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Kasky, please.
Capital Budget, voted 7-0.
Thank you. Recreation Commission?
Recreation Commission approves this 5-0-0.
Thank you. Questions from the body? Discussions? Yes, ma'am.
Becky Nor, Precinct 4. I was just wondering if you could clarify for me, do you also groom the school baseball and softball fields, or is this only for the town? Thank you.
Mr. Egan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We groom all of the athletic fields, infield's with this piece of machinery every day for all of the games, youth through high school.
Mr. Cormier?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Cormier, Precinct 6. Notice a couple of these warrants with some of the different machineries that we've been looking at. This particular one with the nice wide tie is, obviously, does very little damage as well, as the previous one was touted as. Did anybody bother to look at some combined machinery? I mean, we, there are all kinds of companies out there that provide these type of systems with attachments, buckets in the front and otherwise. And I'm just concerned that we're kind of cherry-picking certain machines to do certain things instead of looking at a universal one that would have all potential attachments. We wouldn't be spending this kind of money.
Mr. Egan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, we have looked at machinery that does a number of different jobs. We have some Ventrack, they articulate in the middle, or matriculate, articulate in the middle, but it's our, a backup if we need it for the ballfields. It's not easy to use on some of the smaller little league fields, on the larger skinned infield's for softball. It's okay to use as a backup, but we're very intentional when we bought those. It's bought for, as a slope mower, so the 45-degree hills that we see out behind the bleachers along Cambridge Street, this hills at Simons, at Marshall Simons Middle School, we can't put a large mower up in there, so we use this Ventrack piece of equipment. We've purchased a mower for that as well, so we can use it in leaf cleanup, and we have purchased a little salter on the back, or sander, so that can be used to sand pathways in the winter, walkways, and it also has mowing decks, like a rough deck. So it's a versatile piece of equipment. This is something that is specialized for the infield's that where, you know, you start adding different things, it lessens the ability of what it's meant to do.
Yes, ma'am. Of Mimi Bix Island, please.
Thank you. Precinct 1, Mimi Bix Island. Just a quick question, is this gas or electric-powered?
Mr. Egan?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is gas.
Anything further? Seeing nothing? All those in favor? Opposed? 7-13, under the Recreation Department, Playground Renovations Fit for Wildmere, $190,000. Mr. Heiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The town has 17 playgrounds, this is one of them. It's a small neighborhood park that's off of Wind Street, south of 128. The existing park and equipment were put in place in 2000, so 24 years old. The intent of this is to update all that old equipment that is no longer easily serviced and also put an accessible path and surface down on the playground so it is accessible. Ways and Means supported this 10-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. Heiler. Mr. Kasky?
Capital Budget, voted 5-0 on this.
Thank you. Recreation Department?
Recreation Commission approves 5-0-0.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the body? Seeing none? All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on from the Recreation Department to the School Department. 7-14, Pine Glen Air Conditioning Phase 2, $322,416 to be spent by the School Committee. Mr. Heiler, please.
This is air conditioning for Pine Glen. Split units were determined to be the cheaper solution for this, to help with the fact that it gets fairly hot in there, and also, in particular with summer programs also. In May of 2022, we had an article for $500,000 for the air conditioning. Unfortunately, the lowest quote was $775,000, and 18,000, only 18,000 had been spent. So this article is to, basically, to make up the difference, to be added to that $500,000, covered the 18,000 that was spent, plus some contingency. So Ways and Means did support this 12-0-0 for the same reasons we supported having air conditioning at Pine Glen on the original article back in 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Heiler. Mr. Kasky, please.
Capital Budget, voted 5-0.
Thank you. School Department, School Committee vote?
School Committee vote was 5-0.
Thank you. Discussion, questions from the body? Sarah?
Sarah Walimski, Precinct 5. Given the fact that we're considering replacing Pine Glen, I wondered how much mileage we expect to get out of the system. I don't doubt the need for air conditioning, I just wonder how, how long we'll be able to use it before it's all going to be demoed.
Dr. Conti, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I don't know, but I think one of the options we're looking at was renovating Pine Glen, in which case we would reuse these for as long as we possibly can. And any building project takes many years to move forward, and we have to teach students during those years. So I really want to finish this project, very similar to the Francis Wyman Air Conditioning Project, and I think teachers and students would say that's made a significant improvement, a significant difference. So thank you.
Further questions? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Grace Chu from Precinct 7. One of the reasons for upgrading the AC system is using the second floor during the summer month, which is when the kids are out of school. Is there any reason why we have to upgrade the second floor for specific reasons?
Dr. Conti, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. There may be some summer programming in the building. We've expanded summer programming into our buildings that have air conditioning. So Memorial takes the brunt of those programs currently because it's an air-conditioned building. We like to try to spread that out if we can. Also, once the building heats up during the summer, the fall can be a very hot time, as can the months of June, or the month of June, May and June. So we're seeing a need to have the building air-conditioned even during the current school year.
Thank you. Ms. Wong?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. See you, Wang, from Precinct 5. I just want you guys to all support this article because both my kids went to Pine Glen, and yes, in the, not even just the summertime, from like a May, June, September, sometimes even early October is like terrible in the building. And then, especially when they were on the second floor, it's hot. It's like, imagine your kids taking MCAS when it's 80 degrees outside. What's going to be like inside? And yes, they have some fans, they can open the window, but it would be much, much better if we have AC there to, you know, cool them off. And then also, I don't know, a lot of people talking about like a, you know, demo Pine Glen, but my kids, when they're, Pine Glen is fine, it's totally okay, and we want Pine Glen to go a little bit longer, and then we need to serve all the kids, like, to fulfill what they need. So not only kids, also remember the teachers, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wang. Dr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bob reminded me of something that he would do a better job explaining. So there's a heat pump component to this as well? Right. Through the moderator, thank you.
Mr. Cooner?
Yeah, so these also are not just an air conditioning unit, they're also a heat pump as well, too. So they will help us offset heat costs and heat efficiency during the colder weather as well.
Further questions? Seeing none, let's put this to a vote. All those in favor? Thank you. The article passes. Okay, 7-15. Burlington High School HVAC repairs, $261,800 to be skipped, spent under the jurisdiction of the School Committee. Mr. Heiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The high school has 11 penthouses up on the roof with HVAC equipment. Inside of these, two of them have failed compressors already, and two need to have valves and bearings that need to be replaced. Obviously, this is important, HVAC is important to keep temperature regulated in high school, so it's an essential thing to do. Ways and Means supported this 12-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Kasky, please.
Capital Budget, 5-0 on this.
Thank you. Dr. Conti?
Mr. Moderator, School Committee voted 5-0 in support.
Questions from the body? Seeing none? All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? The article passes. 7-16, Burlington High School refurbished boilers, $150,579 to be skipped, spent under the jurisdiction of the School Committee. Mr. Heiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The high school has three boilers that are used for both heat and hot water. They're used in rotation, so at any given time, two of them are used to keep the wear even on them. They're original to the 1973 building. The annual inspection showed that all three have thinning walls onto tubing in them, and this is to re-tube them, so to extend the boiler's life so we can continue having heat and hot water in the building. Ways and Means supported this 12-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Kasky?
Capital Budget, vote was 5-0.
Thank you. Dr. Conti?
Mr. Moderator, School Committee supported this 5-0-0.
Thank you. Questions from the body? Ms. Law?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So what I would like to know is what was the difference between the price point versus new versus refurbished? And second part of this is how long will the refurbished last?
Mr. Cooner?
Through the moderator. So I don't have an exact quote, only estimates. We'd be looking upwards of $2 to $3 million to replace the boilers and integrate them into the system. This $150,000 is really just going to re-tube all three of them, and we expect to get at least about 10 years of service out of them. So we think this is the more efficient way to do it, is to rebuild the current boilers as is and keep them in rotation.
Anything further? All right, let's vote on this then. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Article passes. 7-17, for the School Department, District-Wide Security Updates, $82,390. Mr. Heiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. There's three components to this article. One is for walkie-talkies to allow communication within the school. The next is a mobile broadband box for emergency situations. So the idea is this ensures that there's broadband access for communications again. And then finally, there's a mapping component of this where all six schools, plus the new Fox Hill School, Fox Hill School, if approved, is also included in this, so really seven schools, where mapping would be done that allows for quicker location information to be given where first responders need to go to, or where they are during emergencies. Ways and Means supported this 12-0.
Thank you, Mr. Heiler. Mr. Kasky, please.
Capital Budget, supported this 5-0.
Thank you. Dr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. School Committee, 5-0.
Thank you. Discussion, questions from the body? Mr. Boyven?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyven, Precinct 1. Just one question, on the chart showing the micro and macro maps, there is a zero next to Memorial Elementary School and Fox Hill New School. Why do they not have macro maps? Is that because they already exist, or some other reason? exist, or some other reason?
Right, so Mr. Brooks just mentioned to me that this estimate was provided to us by a particular vendor, but the quote does include all the maps required for all of the schools that we currently have, just different styles. And if it is a typo, we will have that corrected. But we will get full maps for all six of the schools and the new Fox Hill. Yeah, again, it's included in the conversations that we've had. So if it is typed wrong, we will get those.
Anything further? Seeing nothing. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Article passes. 7-18, generator for the school committee, $95,068. Mr. Iler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Francis Wyman has an emergency generator. It's currently 20 years old. This is used when there's a power outage to supply power to things like the kitchen refrigeration system, heating, emergency lighting. So basically, it's a preventative update for a generator that's aged out here. The plan is for it to be a diesel generator, but if for some reason, there's zoning issues with that, this would also cover the cost of a gas generator. So it would be appropriate for either solution. Ways and Means supported this 12-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Kaski, please.
Capital budget, supported this 5-0.
Thank you. Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. School committee, 5-0.
Thank you. Questions from the body? Mr. Boyven.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyven, Precinct 1. Just one question on the list of qualifications. It says it's UL listed 24-hour sub-base fuel tank. Does that mean the fuel tank is included as part of the unit, or is there a separate underground tank? And does the 24 hours mean that's how long you expect it to be able to run?
Mr. Cooner, please.
Through the chair. So thank you. So yes, if we were to go with a diesel generator, and we were to have that approved through zoning, then this quote does include a 24-hour tank, which means that under full load, it would run the emergency generator for 24 hours. Currently, we have a gas generator, so the same exact price request in front of you would also include replacing it with a gas generator, which would not have a tank on it. So we would not have a tank. We would just have direct plumbing with gas if we did go with a gas generator.
Further questions from the body? Seeing none, we'll vote on this. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Article passes. Yes, Ms. Saltman. All right. It's time for our 9:30 stretch that's 10 minutes late. All right. But please don't go leaving. This is a stretch. This isn't a runaway, please. All right. Back in order, please. Thank you. We all need to be quiet because I'm sure we all can't wait to hear Mr. Iler speak on this next one. Marshall Simons Middle School, Critical Building Systems. Mr. Iler, please.
Thank you for that intro, Mr. Moderator. This article covers three different things. So the first is automated door closers. So basically, these are magnetic latches that are attached to smoke detectors. When smoke is detected, the doors will automatically close. So it's a much safer system than the current one where you hope someone closes them. The second component is refrigerant leak detectors for the HVAC system. So this is a safety issue. Inspection noticed that we did not have those. And the third one was perhaps the most enigmatic in the background, in the backup. It's basically software and programming for the HVAC controller system at the middle school. So this is a box that communicates with 225 different HVAC sensors around the building, and also then controls that system to give accurate environmental control throughout the building. Without this, you'd have much more wildly varying temperatures. Ways and Means supported this 12-0.
Thank you.
Capital budget, supported this 5-0.
Dr. Conti, please.
School committee, 5-0.
Questions from the body? Seeing none. Put this to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. 7-20, BHS fiber connection, $43,599 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the school committee. Mr. Iler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So right now, there's a 1,500-foot wireless link at the high school that goes from the school to the varsity field for a scoreboard, and also for field and driveway security cameras. So unfortunately, because there's not a direct line of sight for this, it's unreliable, which is obviously not what you want for security cameras in particular. So unfortunately, the obvious cheap solution of a high-gain directional antenna doesn't work either because there's not line of sight. So the solution came upon is to have a fiber connection, which unfortunately also requires some trenching to put that in. So hence why it's a little more than your typical wireless link would cost, unfortunately. Ways and Means supported this 12-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. Iler. Mr. Kaski, please.
Capital budget, supported this 5-0.
Thank you. Dr. Conti.
School committee, 5-0.
Thank you. Questions from the body? Yes, sir, Mr. Van Camp.
Hi, Dave Van Camp, Precinct 7. I noticed in the backup, the trenching cost was not included in this number. Do we have any idea of what that's going to be? Are we talking double the number, 10%? Do you have any idea?
Dr. Mr. Cooner.
Thank you to the moderator. So one is based off an estimate, but two, we also have the ability to do some of the trenching in-house with our own equipment and our own personnel. So we just have a relatively low number in case we get into an issue where we need to contract somebody else to come in and help us.
Anything further from the body? Seeing nothing. Let's vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Motion carries. 7-21, BHS electric forklift, $50,160 to be spent by the school committee. Mr. Iler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The high school acts as a receiving and distribution point for the entire district, so it's essentially a mini warehouse for the school system. There's currently an electric forklift that's 20 years old and has been out of production for 15 years. So this has become difficult to maintain, and it's at its end of life. So Ways and Means supported replacing this at 12-0.
Thank you, Mr. Iler. Mr. Kaski.
Capital budget, supported this 5-0.
Thank you.
School committee, 5-0.
Thank you. Questions from the body? Seeing none. We'll vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Motion carries. 7-22, district-wide maintenance vehicle for the school committee, $65,890. Mr. Iler, please.
Moderator, this is an expanded capability. There's currently five employees doing maintenance across the six school buildings, and there's only one vehicle right now. So what that means is that oftentimes, personal vehicles are used to move both tools and supplies, which means that the beginning of the jobs, they're moved into the personal vehicles. At the end of the day, it has to all be unloaded, so people can use their vehicles for what they normally use them for. So the idea is to expand this from one vehicle to two now. So this would be a cargo van that would be appropriate for moving all these supplies and tools around and allow the employees time to be used more efficiently, actually doing maintenance work rather than lots of unloading and loading. Ways and Means supported this 12-0.
Thank you. Mr. Kaski.
Capital budget, supported this 5-0.
Thank you. Dr. Conti.
School committee, 5-0.
Thank you. Questions from the body? Seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Motion carries. 7-23, Marshall Simons Middle School bathrooms, $358,574 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the school committee. Mr. Iler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is to renovate nine bathrooms in the middle school. They are not part of the 2011 renovation project. So basically, this is replacing aging infrastructure and bringing it up to current ADA standards. Ways and Means supported this 12-0.
Thank you. Mr. Kaski.
Capital budget, supported this 5-0.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, school committee, 5-0.
Thank you. We got a routine going. Any questions from the body? Yes, ma'am. Beside Mr. Van Camp. Who is that? Oh, is that Mimi again?
Yes, it is. I'm wondering why the bathrooms aren't to ADA compliance to begin with. I know when the law was passed in 1990, time was given for different entities to catch up. But I mean, I support this. I will vote for it. But I am curious, like, why we are in this position at all, why it's not ADA compliant. Thank you.
Mr. Cooner.
Thank you to the moderator. So the biggest reason we're in this predicament is because the aging of the actual bathrooms. When you have 1,000-plus students who use this day and night for events, plus schooling, they take some wear and tear. And since they weren't during the renovation updated, we're looking at multiple years of this. As far as making them ADA compliant, some of the bathrooms were not updated at the time. So they have some tight corners. They have some partitions that wouldn't be in the right place today. So we will make those changes to make sure that they are compliant.
Anything further? Ms. Norm.
Becky Norm, Precinct 4. My question is more of a process question. Over the last few years, the middle school bathrooms have been closed a number of times due to vandalism or bad behavior. This is a lot of money worth spending on this, and I'm all for it. But what are we doing to ensure that this investment isn't ruined? Thanks.
Dr. Conti, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think, Ms. Norm, we're really trying to make sure that we have appropriate duty coverage for students. And I know that the middle school administration is having more formal sign-in-and-sign-out privileges for bathroom usage. And it's a process that we're working through with the kids. I would say that there is some research that the better condition the bathrooms are in, when kids utilize them, the better they take care of them. So we really do need to keep our bathrooms sort of updated and clean for the students, and then we need to manage the students properly.
Thank you, Dr. Conti. Anything further? All right, let's vote on this then. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Motion passes. 7-24, Marshall Simons Middle School locker rooms, $288,840 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the school committee. Mr. Iler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So these are locker rooms that are not being utilized as locker rooms anymore. And the goal here is to repurpose them to basically utilize the space more effectively. So in particular, they'd be repurposed into a fitness center, a classroom, and bathrooms that are different than the bathrooms in the previous article. So Ways and Means supported this 12-0.
Thank you. Mr. Kaski.
Capital budget, supported this 5-0.
Thank you. Dr. Conti.
School committee, 5-0.
Questions from the body? Seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Motion carries. 7-25, Fox Hill cafeteria tables, $55,473 to be spent by the school committee. Mr. Iler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The current tables are showing significantly wear and basically approaching their end of life. So this is to replace 25 tables. They will be ADA compliant. They're the same tables that are used in the other elementary schools, so we have flexibility to redistribute if that turns out to be a desirable thing to do. And also, if we do approve a new Fox Hill, these tables would, again, be usable in any elementary schools. So Ways and Means supported this.
12-0, I think that was. Thank you. Mr. Kaski.
Capital budget, supported this 5-0.
Thank you.
School committee, 5-0.
Thank you. Comments, questions from the body? Seeing none. All those in favor? Seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Motion carries. 7-26. PG fencing. Is this as opposed to, like, mature reading? This is only PG? Oh, Pye and Glenn, excuse me. $25,000, $25 to be spent by the school committee. Mr. Heiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll just make a general comment based on a previous question, just to reinforce what Dr. Conti said. There is no feasibility study for Pye and Glenn in place right now. So, any potential replacement is many years out. So, we should not stop maintaining the school, I think is the point of that. There's currently 360 feet of damaged fencing. That's old and basically becoming dangerous. So, the goal of this is to replace that, keep the fence safe in doing its job of separating kids from traffic. I'll just note in the backup, there's a confusing duplicate page that says 180 feet, which you should ignore. It's 360 feet. Ways and Means supported this 12-0.
Thank you. Mr. Kaski.
Capital Budget supported this 5-0.
Thank you. Dr. Conti.
School Committee 5-0.
Questions from the body? Yes, sir.
Blais Lieber, Precinct 6. Just want to say I'm very happy to see this item on here because the fence is in really rough shape, and it's been that way for several years now. I just want to know, do we know how the fence got so bad in the first place? Because it's, like, extremely messed up, not just, like, kind of rusted away. And two, is there anything that's been considered to prevent that from happening again, like, maybe changing the way the snowplows operate in the parking lot or something like that? Because it, I mean, if it could happen again, wouldn't want to see this come up again in a few years from now. Thanks.
Mr. Kuna.
Thank you. I don't know the exact answer, but typically, a lot of the damage does happen during the wintertime. Rec department and our maintenance crew does the best they can to make sure that it's in the best condition it can be. Both of these sections of fence are in the front of the school, so it does keep children either from running into the parking lot or from running into the street. So, we definitely want to have it so it's in the best condition that it can be. But there are no curbs in that parking lot, the sidewalk going down the street, the curb is very minimal. So, there's no immediate plan right now to rectify that. It's really just to replace the damaged fence that, you know, is 20-plus years old and rusted, and really just give us a new fence. They will be cemented in place, you know, so hopefully, we'll have some new stable base. But I really can't control some of the drivers in this town, so...
Anything further? Seeing nothing else? All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Motion carries. 7-27, Marshall Simons Middle School furniture, $132,215 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the school committee. Mr. Heiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is to basically update some furniture that's not appropriate for its current use right now. So, the intent is to buy something that is appropriate. Basically, if you look at each set of 120, there's 120 tables, each of which have four chairs. So, each set of table plus four chairs would be $1,100. Ways and Means supported this 12-0.
Thank you. Mr. Kaski.
Capital Budget supported this 5-0.
Thank you. Dr. Conti.
School Committee 5-0.
Thank you. Questions from the body? Seeing none. Put this to a vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Motion carries. 7-28, district-wide curriculum review, $245,350 to be spent by the school committee. Mr. Heiler, please.
The purpose of this article is to do a review of all the curriculum for math and English from pre-K through 12. It's been 15 years since the last time a deep review is done of this. If you look at the backup, there's a pretty detailed plan of what would be done for the next three years. So, it is a multi-year plan. In general, the idea is this would be done over the summer, so it's not interfering with the school year, obviously. And the intent is that about three years from now, we would do this for other subjects. So, Ways and Means supported this 12-0.
Thank you. Mr. Kaski.
Capital Budget supported this 5-0.
Thank you. Dr. Conti.
School Committee supported this 5-0.
Questions? Comments? Mr. Rothfield.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Alex Rothfield, Precinct 5. So, one of the big concerns about the school district right now is that we seem very high on the cost per student and not quite as high on the actual school rankings relative to the rest of the state. So, could the district-wide curriculum review actually help in terms of getting our test scores up and getting us a little more impressive school system? Is that going to be one of the things that can help address?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Very difficult for me to answer that. I think that would be the intention, to have our student performance certainly increase. I'm not sure, I agree with the premise of your question, that the rankings that you may be referring to actually reflect the quality of education in the school. And it's a much longer conversation that maybe we can have. So, again, I do think we need to look at measures. And I think we have a new Assistant Superintendent. We're very excited to do a curriculum review process and involve our teachers, which requires summer work, and that requires that we make sure that we have enough funding to pay them for their expertise during that time.
Ms. Phillips.
Not sure if that's working. Yep. Why is this a capital expense, may I ask?
Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's a capital expense because this is work that would take place outside of the operating budget. It's an infusion. It's different work that we need. It's really a one-time expense over three years, and then we're hoping to build that capacity into the teachers that would be supported ongoing in the operating budget. So, the operating budget wouldn't have the resources needed to do this. Capital project would be for, we have used capital warrants before for large curriculum adoptions. And in this case, it would be curriculum work, just to jumpstart it because we couldn't carry that in the operating budget.
Mr. Cormier.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Cormier, Precinct 6. And I know this is kind of an oversimplification of this because I've kind of, I looked at this myself, and I was wondering why, if we have Directors of Curriculum and a multitude of other administrative personnel, why we're spending another quarter million dollars on something that I thought was part of certain positions' responsibilities in order to maintain curriculum within our school system. So, I'm a little bit concerned that we're spending this kind of money on something that should have been the job of people in the education system as it is today. So, what exactly are we paying for, for these positions? And I guess I would, I'd question as far as whether we should support this at this time, because if we're going to be doing this, why don't we just eliminate the position and save some costs if we're going to go through these exercises of revamping the curriculum in the first place?
Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Cormier, I could certainly understand that question because schools operate a little bit differently than any of the organizations that maybe you find yourselves in. The challenge with doing this type of work while school is in session are the kids are here. If we could ask you to keep your kids home for a year, we could certainly go back and do a lot of this work. We need teachers' time. Teachers are occupied during the day. So, a lot of this expense, Mr. Cormier, is to get people to work over the summer to do this work that they can't do when they're in front of kids all the time. So, this is, again, a relooking at their curriculum. Many jobs have that time built in where you're not, if you're a doctor, you're not in surgery, you know, eight hours a day. You have time to work on your skills. When teachers are in front of kids, when they're doing their work, when our curriculum people are managing, when kids are in session, that's where their attention is. So, we're really asking people to step back and to rethink the pre-kindergarten through 12 sequence in math and literacy and English moving forward. And this, the work that they do then will carry forward beyond the three years that we're asking to use this, these resources.
Further questions? Yes, sir, right here.
Bill Lassano, Precinct 4. Dr. Conti, could you explain to me Dr. Lovett's role in this? Is she getting paid a certain salary? Because I agree with Mr. Cormier. We have an incredible amount, well, not incredible amount, a very large amount of administrators in the district, and I feel like some of this could be done in-house. How much are the teachers, you said this is summer work for the teachers, how much will the teachers be involved in this compared to Dr. Lovett? Is this in step with Dr. Lovett? And again, is Dr. Lovett receiving a certain amount of this? Because that isn't really clear in the article.
Dr. Conti, please.
Mr. Moderator, Dr. Lovett, Gail Lovett, is a literacy expert. She's a consultant. So, we're bringing her up to facilitate the conversations with teachers. She would get a fixed amount for doing that work to facilitate it, to make sure it gets done. She'd work with our staff, and it's to bring sort of the latest research into those conversations and to make sure that we are, again, moving in a direction that reflects the latest research. Dr. Lovett does literacy research for the University of Virginia, so we are contracting her for her expertise.
Mr. Lassano, follow-up?
Bill Lassano, Precinct 4. So, out of the $245,350, how much will Dr. Lovett be getting paid?
It looks like it's around $33,000.
And the rest will be for professional development and teacher...
Teacher time, could be curriculum materials. Again, this is going to be taking place over three years, Mr. Lassano.
Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Murphy, Precinct 5. Eric, that made sense kind of while you do, but why now? Is there, is this something you wish you could have done five years ago, and you've been putting it off? Or what has happened in the education world that is causing you to want to do this now?
It's really that we brought in a new Assistant Superintendent who has reviewed, spent her first year reviewing our curriculum and saying that we really, it needs to be updated. And so, it's really the addition of a new staff person who is looking to recharge the curriculum review process. And so, I think that's why now, Mr. Murphy.
Mr. Maury.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bruce Maury, Precinct 1. To Dr. Conti, had to follow-up with the town meeting member, Murphy's question. One was the two-part question. When was the last time this district-wide review was done, if it has ever been done?
Dr. Conti.
Mr. Moderator, I think when I first got here, Mr. Maury, so 15, 16 years ago.
Okay. Second question is, would it be, or conceptually, would it be cheaper if it could be done more frequently? Is this a $245,000 nut because it's been 15 years, and this stuff is so antiquated that it's going to take a lot longer or more effort to change the curriculum or modify the curriculum? Can you answer that, I guess? That's my question.
I'll try my best. I think some of that is absolutely true. We need to do this more frequently, and it needs to be a regular investment instead of a jumpstart like this. So, we need to do that. I'd also say that our student population is also not static, and it's changing. So, our teachers are seeing a much more diverse class in front of them and needing to revamp their curriculum and be trained in different ways to make sure all kids can access and succeed. So, I think it's a couple of things. But to your point, we do need to look at this more regularly and more frequently.
George.
George Papianas, Precinct 2. Thank you, Dr. Conti, for bringing this. As an educator, I agree that we need to do reviews of our curricula. I see, just to, I guess, clarify a point earlier that was made, these are two different professionals, one for math and one for literacy. Can you speak to us about Dr. Thunder's work and Dr. Lovett's work and why we chose them?
Dr. Conti, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We chose them because they're experts. We like that they had some experience in Massachusetts, but also in a different state, and they had been successful with that work. So, I think they take a practitioner's view. We want people who are researchers, but both of them have actual practical experience, work in a classroom, and they seem to relate to teachers really well. Ultimately, our teachers have to incorporate this curriculum, this knowledge into their teaching. It's not, these outside folks have the skill, but the people who are going to remain in Burlington, working with Burlington children, are the existing staff that we have. So, I think that's why, is we found their recommendations to be exemplary and their relation to teachers being one of their strengths.
Ms. Ryan. We're down to one runner here because younger folks who were running the mics can't work after 10, so they bailed out on us. So, let's see if we can switch back and forth, give this guy some exercise.
Okay, great. Maureen Ryan, Precinct 1. I am in favor of this article, and I just, as a school administrator in a neighboring district, I just wanted to comment on a few of the points that were raised. First is that curriculum is very expensive, and so having the right curriculum is important to do some analysis. And our kids deserve the best curriculum. When we want to see test scores higher, and we want to see our kids getting into competitive programs, it really is important to have the newer and most appropriate curriculum and materials in front of the kids. So, that's number one. Number two, the populations in our schools have changed. We have a lot of students. We have many multilingual learners that have come in. We see learning gaps still from the pandemic that exist, and we do everything we can to teach the kids. It is very important that our educators have time outside of the school day where they are compensated so that they can receive appropriate professional development and have the time to really dig down and have a voice in the curriculums that we use. And I think that's a big piece of this. And additionally, the use of a consultant, an expert in the field for both literacy and math, is very important. It's important for the educators who are in the classrooms to have someone to work with that really has just the most current research in the field to ensure that we have the best materials. And so, I know that this seems, this article, like a lot of money, and it is, but I would strongly urge people to support this. I really think it makes a difference for the kids.
Ms. Prendergast, please.
Michelle Prendergast, Precinct 5. I'm in agreement with a curriculum review for our schools, and I'm just curious, is this the kind of thing that would be monitored or regulated by the state of Massachusetts?
Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ms. Prendergast, I think, in a way, because we have to teach state standards, so they would do that, but sort of how we reach all kids would be very context-dependent. And so, again, I think it would be a both-and, not an either-or. So, we would have to make sure our curriculum is aligned with state expectations. But we want to make sure then all kids are able to be successful in that curriculum.
Yes, sir, right here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kevin Silver, Precinct 4.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kevin Silverer, Precinct 4. I certainly see the value in this, and it certainly seems that teacher participation is probably very required and mandatory to, to make this effective. And I understand this takes place over the summer, which certainly makes sense. I'm not really sure how teachers' contracts would work. So is this optional for teachers to participate, or if it is during the summer, or is it something that they really must?
Dr. Conti.
Mr. Moderator, I think there would be some school year activity, but a lot of it would be happening during the summer. We have to post summer work, but teachers are very interested in this. So again, I think part of the reason for the expense is to compensate them for their time. And I think, again, our teachers are really interested in working and improving themselves over the summer. So in teaching currently is really a year-round profession. Their, their, people are really working to improve their skills and create curriculum over the summer as well. So I think this just aligns with the work they would be doing anyway. But I can't mandate that people do it, but there's a lot of excitement for this work.
Follow-up, if I may?
Right.
So it sounds like if the teachers could vote, they would vote for this as well?
Yes.
Anything further? Mr. Hanafin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dan Hanafin, Precinct 2. The question that I have is, does this include instructional time in the summer, or is it strictly review of the curriculum? Would there be instructional time for students, perhaps new students coming into the system, things like that?
Dr. Conti.
None in this particular proposal. Captain Hanafin, I think this is mostly for the curriculum and the adults, but it may lead to the conclusion that we might need to create some summer programming that we would, we would try to do and use, again, create those programs within the operating budget. This is really a focus on making sure we're teaching the right content in the best ways, the most appropriate ways for our student population today.
Just a follow-up, if you don't mind. The second question, you touched on it a little bit. The idea of this being driven at either a state or a federal level, is there, is there an impetus for this from that direction, or is this something that's strictly internal?
Again, I'm not sure it's completely clean on how that works. The federal government has a role in local education, but it's relative, kind of minimal, and mostly just through compliance and mandates. I think the state does have a much larger role through standards. And this is a lot reflecting on, I think, more up-to-date research that they've had and implementing that locally. So I'd say it's more of a local conversation. But again, we are implementing state expectations and state standards under an umbrella of federal regulations.
Thank you.
Anything further? Yes, Ms. Norm.
Hello. Becky Noram, Precinct 4. My question for you is maintenance. So once the initial training and the reports are received and process deficits are identified, what specific roles and people are responsible for maintaining new processes and making interim improvements? Thank you.
Dr. Conti.
Ms. Norm, I think the idea is, once we would have some improved capacity, then we would do a lot of that trainer, train the trainer model, and then we can incorporate it into our regular professional development moving forward. This is really just a jumpstart to relook at our curriculum, and then we would maintain it by, again, providing the regular professional development that we have, developing local expertise, and making sure that as we hire new teachers, they're brought in and mentored into the work that's been done. So I do think the impact is going to be many years moving forward beyond this warrant article.
Ms. Norm, follow-up?
Becky Noram, Precinct 4. Thanks, Dr. Conti. My question wasn't clear. I understand the value to teachers for training and believe that this is valuable professional development. My question is if processes and changes are made, for example, how we identify dyslexia or other learning disorders in elementary school students, who's responsible for maintaining and keeping those processes going afterwards? Because currently, we do have a director of literacy. I don't know if we have the equivalent for mathematics. So my concern is more about maintenance following this particular training and work. Thank you.
Dr. Conti.
Through the moderator, Ms. Norm, we do have those positions, and I guess the expectation would be based on some of the outcome data that we would look at, but those folks would be responsible for making sure that we were implementing what we created and learned.
Mr. Pro.
Michael Pro, Precinct 4. Move the question?
There's been a motion to move the question. It's not debatable. Requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Clear two-thirds. Motion passes. So let's move on to vote on the article. All those in favor of the article? Thank you. All those opposed? The article passes. I heard a motion to adjourn. I'm not supposed to ignore it, so I guess I'll have to call a vote on it. No second? Motion dies then. God bless, the Farbus rules. Hey. 7-29, BHS Music Room Flooring, School Committee, $192,500. Mr. Eiler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The chorus and band rooms in the high school have tiered flooring, and as a result, aren't universally accessible. You may recall back in May of 2022, we had an article for $450,000 to solve this by using concrete fill, basically. That was not implemented. And last year, in our May 2023 meeting, that money was repurposed with some additional funds to do the high school feasibility study. So the need is still there since it, it hasn't been addressed. This solution is, I think, a better solution in that it's less expensive than the original one proposed in 2022, and is also potentially reusable since it's not a permanent installation. So Ways and Means supported this 12-0.
Mr. Kasky.
Capitol Budget voted 5-0.
Thank you. Dr. Conti?
School Committee, 5-0.
Discussion. Question from the body. Yes, Ms. Wang.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sorry, I haven't been following the high school building committee. So if you can give us a little bit brief, that, what's going on and whether any reports, so like how necessary, how urgent these next two articles are. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I can just do, I can do the music room flooring very quickly because I came before you, I think, three years ago. It was about accessibility of two rooms, the chorus room and the band room that were built. Again, late 60s, early 70s, where they're stepped down and they're not accessible to all students. The solution there was really expensive and permanent. Didn't seem to be a good fit. We asked you to reappropriate that money for a feasibility study, and that feasibility study is, is ongoing right now. The solution that we're proposing now, we feel, again, as Mr. Eiler said, is much better. It's using staging that is installed and can be inspected and can make the, both the band room and the chorus room fully accessible. That staging can also be reused. So let's say, three years from now, we tear down this building and build a beautiful new high school. I'm kidding, just bear with me. We could use, we could take the staging up and reuse the staging. What do we use staging for? We use it at graduation. We use it at a bunch of other things. So we felt like this was a better solution. Solves the accessibility problem that town meeting supported three years ago, but also is, in a sense, it's not easily moved. It's not sort of something that is flimsy or temporary, but it is something that we could remove if, if needed and reuse moving forward.
Further questions? Any none? Put it to a vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Motion carries. 7-30, BHS Carpet Replacement, $109,577 to be spent by the school committee. Mr. Eiler, please.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. This is to replace 10,000 square feet of worn carpeting in the high school. As generally, in part of keeping the area looking good, and as Dr. Conti mentioned, people work better in a nice area, and they also tend to treat the facilities better if they're well, well-cared-for. If I did my math right, this comes out to $99 a square yard. That includes demo of the old carpet, putting in new carpet, new baseboard rubber, moving the furniture out in order to do it, and moving it back in when they're all done. So Ways and Means supported this 12-0.
Mr. Kasky.
Capitol Budget supported this 5-0.
Thank you. Dr. Conti?
School Committee was, I believe, 3-2, and three in support.
Thank you. Questions from the body. Mr. Lasano.
Bill Lasano, Precinct 4. Other than aesthetics, what is the reason behind this, the need for this?
Mr. Kuna.
Through the moderator. We actually have some ripped areas as well, too, so they become trip hazards. This question came up in my Capitol Budget meeting, and I actually welcomed a walk and talk with Mark Woods. So I brought him amongst the whole entire school and showed him all these areas. So we're really trying to stay on top of it. We do have the means to obviously replace carpet like kind of as needed, but when you get to a building this large, and we're talking 10,000 square feet, it really would just eat into the operating budget.
Including all the carpet in the building? Is it mostly at Central, Central Office?
Mr. Kuna.
Right, so, yeah, most of the carpet is located, not even including here in the auditorium. It's mostly upper library, lower library, offices, central office is included. Classrooms typically have VCT tile, gyms and so forth obviously don't. So it's mostly in offices, some hallways, and then common areas.
Further questions? Ms. Angelo.
Pat Angelo, Precinct 5. Can we have the minority report? You said it was 3-2.
Hi. Mr. Brooks and I voted against this article because it contained a lot of sections of the high school that are hopefully going to be demolished in the next five to 10 years. And we were standing in the school committee room, and it seemed like pretty good shape carpet.
Further questions? Mr. Everett.
Hello. Corey Everett, Precinct 6. My question is kind of on that lifespan of the carpet front. How long is this carpet meant to last? And how old is it currently?
Mr. Kuna.
So as far as expectations for it to last, if it's any indicator of what's here, more than 20 years. So I hope actually we outgrow the building, replace the building, do an addition before the carpet is worn out. But since we don't know that answer, I think it should last us at least the end of life of the building that we have right now. Maybe wrong term. I shouldn't have said the end of life of this building because we may do something different.
Anything further? Yes, sir, right here.
Thank you. Neil Espazio, Precinct 7. Just curious, are there any concerns with asbestos underneath the carpet?
Mr. Kuna.
None that we've tested so far that we have concerns for. Right, so, again, on that, please. So we do have an HARA report that we do have updated regularly. We do maintenance in this building as well, too. So we do test these areas and work with the Board of Health if there are any concerns. We also have a vendor that we contract as well, too, to help us with any HARA concerns as well, too. So I can't say never. I can just say that we don't expect any, especially in the places that we're looking to replace and upgrade.
Anything additional? Yes. Ms. Antune.
Michelle Antune, Precinct 1. I am all for investing in our schools in every way we possibly can, and I'm not willing to back away from investments based on us building a new school or renovating. But it really seems like this is kind of an aesthetic expenditure that could be avoided because, as Ms. Passardo said, we're looking to build or redo this high school in the next five to 10 years. And I'm not really a numbers person, but it seems like if this isn't a health and safety issue and is primarily aesthetics, then we should probably continue with just the basic upkeep in the meantime and put that money towards something else. That's just my opinion. No questions.
Ms. Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christine Kim, Precinct 4. I just wanted to know how these upkeep items affect our ability to get funding for a new high school. Thank you.
Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Funding from the state, I'm assuming. I'm not sure, I think they want to see that buildings are maintained and not run down, and I think we do a very good job of that. I'm not sure those costs are the primary factor that the state isn't supporting this building. It's, seems to me, after applying 12 times, it's more enrollment-driven than maintenance-driven. And again, this building still needs to function. As Mr. Eiler pointed out, students want to see that you're taking care of the space in which they're learning. People are saying this is aesthetics, and we have lots of stained carpet. We have lots of ripped carpet. It's just important that we try to maintain this building and try to keep it, I think, looking positive. And students do behave better when the buildings that they are entering are well taken care of and clean. And Mr. Kuna's staff does a great job of that. This building is, what, 365,000 square feet? There's a lot of building. Not all of it's carpeted, obviously, but the libraries especially are big, and they get a lot of foot traffic. And we just want there to be sort of clean carpet where the, the kids are spending time.
Ms. Asher.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kate Asher, Precinct 4. To what extent, so I appreciate the trip hazard piece of it, to what extent do they prevent slipping, slip and falls? In other words, provide traction?
Mr. Kuna.
Thank you. I'm not sure how to put that in terms of measurement. So typically, on any sloped hallways, we don't put carpet, and we typically do either like a corrugated surface or something that has some actual texture to it. So mostly, these are in areas that are either common areas, library areas, quiet areas, offices, and so forth. So it's really more about sound absorption, and we're not really looking for the traction piece. This would be a high-grade commercial carpet, so similar to what you have here. So you would get some long wear and tear out of it, but it's really more for a sound and a softer feel than it is for a traction component.
Mr. Everett.
Corey Everett, Precinct 6. I had asked earlier about the lifespan of the carpets. When were these carpets put in? Like, how old are they currently?
Mr. Kuna.
So the lifespan changes depending on the location. So in, for example, in Central Office, they may be 12, 13 years old. In the library, they may be 10- In the library, they may be 10 years old. And then we may get into some special ed offices that could be 16 years old, foreign language. I mean, so the spectrum really goes anywhere from, you know, 10, 12 to 20-plus years old. Some, I don't even have any way to tell how old it is. I just don't have any records of.
Mr. Rodfield.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Alex Rodfield, Precinct 5. So considering we are going to probably knock down this building in the next five to 10 years, was there any consideration getting maybe like a lower grade carpet that's not supposed to last as long, but might be a little easy on the budget?
Mr. Kuna.
Great question, and the answer is yes. So please realize while the dollar value is high, the square footage is low. So in 360,000 or 65,000 square foot building, even if you want to say 150,000 of it is carpet, this is really about 10,000 square feet of it, right? So we're really looking to tackle the high-traffic areas, the ones that are wear and tear, the ones that are worn down, the ones that are ripped. This isn't replacing every carpet in the whole entire building. Anytime there's a major emergency or something that's worn down right away, we'll cover that in the operating budget. But again, 10,000 square feet is a lot for us to cover in a single year. The other thing, too, is because there's labor included, sometimes in smaller offices, our staff can take care of ripping it up and replacing it as well, too, so we can maybe make that stretch a little further.
Anything further? Seeing nothing? All those in favor? Opposed? Oh, it's a little close here. We're going to have to have a count. All those in favor, please stand. Are we overlapping here, folks? Wait, let's get them both in one aisle, please. Get both in one aisle, get in the middle of it. One go one, one go up, one go down. Come on over here, the one in the center aisle, please. All right. Maybe get them, get them both beside you. Have one go up and one go down. Count through, through the count. One online? Okay. All right. You folks, sit down. All those are opposed? What do you want, Jack? Yeah, we counted them. Against my better judgment. There being 53 in favor and 44 opposed, the motion passes. I have heard a motion to adjourn. We can't, we can't yet. We have something else to take care of. Something very, very important.
Pat. Pat Angelo, can you come down front?
See, I told you it was very important. Most important thing we've done all night.
So we have another member who has hit the golden anniversary of Town Meeting. Pat Angelo has been on for Town Meeting for 50 years. She's trying to tell us that she was only a baby when she started. She probably was. You want to turn this way so she can take the picture? If you didn't get a chance to sign it, you can always come find her and get more signatures. So this is for you. You're very welcome.
I had no intention of running for Town Meeting. A neighbor, Hope Paulson, do you remember her? Long Town Meeting member. She came down to my house and she said, there's an opening in the district and I really think you should go for it. And I had no interest in it. We had just moved from Medford, I didn't know nothing about Town Meeting. So being the loving wife, I threw my husband under the bus by saying, my husband would never want me to do anything like this to get involved in politics. So two days later, she came back again and I wasn't there and he was. And she told him about Town Meeting and he said, oh, I think she'd be great at that. So it was a two-to-one vote. And thank you, and thank you to all of you people because you are doing the work, too. And a lot of you are young people with families and kids involved in support and sports. So thank you to all of you, too.
We still have a motion on the floor to adjourn. Is there anybody in favor? Better yet, is there anybody opposed? We'll see you on Wednesday.